Okay, we will bring to order this April 23 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Yes.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 26th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk.
For your consent matters, items 1 through 48, you are adopting an ordinance for item 36, amending Chapter 16.87 of the Sacramento County Code to establish transit impact fees as part of the Sacramento Transportation and Transit Development Fee Program. You waive reading on this on April 9th, and that concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay, I have no cards from the public or there members of the board that would like something pulled from the agenda to discuss. Mr. Natoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could, I wanted to comment on a couple items, and I did have a question on one item, item 14, 17, and 39.
Item 14 is the Retirement System Actuarial Evaluation and Retirement Contribution Rates for Fiscal Year 2019-20.
Yes, and I appreciate certainly the thoroughness of the report, and again, it goes into the contribution that obviously the county will make on behalf of the, as the employer, on behalf of the employees that are covered under the county retirement system. I wanted to call out, though, and I know it's built into what will be delivered to us in a few weeks, the projected county budget, but there is a $24 million base contribution over and above what it was last year, and that's been acknowledged, but I just, as we go into budget deliberations and discussions a little later this spring, I just think it's important to note that this is a significant increase, and it comes right off the bottom line. Is that correct, Mr. Gill?
That is correct.
Okay, and that was just, again, a point of information, certainly continuing to report, but that was significant, about $16 million of that, give or take, is actually general fund contribution.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had on that item.
Okay, item 17, authority to amend and increase pooled contracts by $12,928,489 with BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital, BHC Sierra Vista Hospital, and Sutter Valley Hospitals, Sutter Center for Psychiatry to provide inpatient psychiatric services to adults.
On this item, certainly this board and members of the board have, you know, spent a good deal of time discussing various aspects of providing mental health care and providing these services that are covered under county contracts, and I guess the point that I wanted to make with this is that, as we've discussed this in past years, we've embarked upon some, I think, good initiatives and projects to try to rebalance the delivery system and to cut the inpatient days, of which we're paying almost $1,000 a day per patient that is admitted to the various contracted providers here. And I guess the point that I think is a very important one to make, it's contained in the staff report, is that, I guess, I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that what we're doing as it relates to the rebalancing, I think is having a net effect, certainly there's some quality of those programs in a smaller residential setting, but when I see year over year going from basically $28 million to now $34 million, and we're at 35,000 bed days, and there's an explanation behind that, I think it warrants beyond just maybe in the budget setting for us to have this conversation again, this board, because this continues to go nowhere but north as it relates to the costs, and even though we've implemented some additional programming, and there's, you know, a limited number of beds, and I think those are positives, there's no cost containment here. It just continues to go up by order of magnitude, and then last year in budget, I know this member brought it up, as related to how we built $21 million in the budget, and now we're going to $34 million in order to get through the final quarter of this year. That just seems extreme, and it may be the realities of what we deal with here, but I think we need to have, again, another focused discussion at this board regarding these spiraling costs, because over the last five years, we've gone from basically $22 million to now $34 million annually, and I don't know what the projections are for 1920, I guess you could bring those to us now when we have that discussion, but it just seems to me that even the good work we're doing, it's having such a limited, if, you know, net effect, that I think we need to be real about this, because I'm not so sure we're ever going to get this contained.
We'll have that discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Serna. I think, is there another one?
Yeah, I had one as well. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. Item 39, approve the resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2019-20 proposed to be funded by the Local Streets and Roads Program created by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
I just wanted to offer a kudo on this one. I think that embodying this report, there's a whole lot of work that we hope to get done this season, and I wanted to thank our Department of Transportation and all the folks that have worked on this. Obviously, this is a, you know, a simulation of working with, you know, all five supervisors, certainly with our staff, and assessing the needs for many, many improvements, and certainly repairs, and investment in our road system. And again, this reflects the gas taxes coming to this county, and certainly an increase year over year, and so I just wanted to call this out, because again, it's a report that, you know, lists the local streets and roads, but I think there's an extensive list here, and hopefully we can get to most of this work this season. Again, obviously, that's dependent upon how far the funds go, and, you know, getting contracts out, and certainly have our own forces do some of this work, but I wanted to just thank our staff for this good work, so.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Items 37 and 38, which the clerk can read together.
Item 37, agreement with Westerveld Ecological Services LLC for environmental mitigation services for the Interstate 5 and Metro Air Parkway Interchange Project. Item 38, approve the freeway maintenance agreement with California State Department of Transportation for the Interstate 5 and Metro Air Parkway Interchange Project.
Great, thank you. So speaking of kudos, I just want to take the opportunity, especially since I see Mr. Penrose, Mr. Givens, Mr. Witten, and representatives from the federal government in chambers today, I wanted to congratulate all parties for getting us to this place that we can now seriously discuss the prospect of breaking ground on a much-needed interchange that will serve Metro Air Park, and begin to get the traffic directed to where it needs to be, especially in light of the fact that Amazon continues to do a lot of, has a lot of activity out there. We need to get those truck trip impacts, especially off of roads like Bayou and other surface roads, but I know it's been a real team effort in the last several months to get us to a place where we have kind of creatively sought to refinance some of the critical first component parts of the infrastructure to serve that part of Sacramento County. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank our team in its totality within the county and outside the county. Thank you.
Okay, any others? Ms. Peters.
Busy morning. Thank you. I'd like to ask the clerk to note that I'm recusing on items 2, 3, 4, and 5, and 33 due to a business conflict of interest.
Ms. Frost. Okay, Flo, we're going to give you, this is your reading practice day. Items 30, 40, and 41, you can read them together.
30, 40, and 41.
I apologize, but no heads up on that.
Okay, and I'll read those and call them all at once. Item 30, authorization to execute First Amendments to Agreement for County Code Enforcement Abatement and Board Up Services.
31, 40, and 41.
31.
31, 40, and 41.
Item 31 is the LED Street Light Installation Project, SHRA 2017 District 2, Final Contract Acceptance. Item 40 is the Florin Area New Street Light Project Phase 2 bids to be received on May 23rd, and item 41 is the LED Street Light Installation Project Phase 2 bids to be received on May 23rd.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to stay with the theme of the day, and thank Mr. Penrose, and Mr. Vikari, and all of your staff. These projects have been a long time in the making. These neighbors have been calling for streetlights for decades, an older neighborhood which needs the security and the safety lighting, and this will provide 130 new LED lights for a neighborhood that has never had them, so it's been a lot of work, and I sincerely appreciate it, as do the constituents I represent.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion for the consent calendar as amended? Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 2, 3, 4, and 5. Okay, on to item 50, presentation of resolution recognizing May 7, 2019 as Capital Region Small Business Week, highlighting BizX, the Joint City and County of Sacramento event.
I have two overheads to project.
And would you identify yourself for the record?
I would be happy to. Good morning, Board Chair Kennedy and Board members. My name is June Livingston, and I am the supervisor of the Business Environmental Resource Center, Burke. It's an honor to be here with you today in celebration of Capital Region Small Business Week. It is our local celebration of National Small Business Week. This week is really very important because it is so vitally important to support our local small businesses. They play a vital role in stimulating both our economy and job growth. Small businesses create two out of every three jobs in the United States. According to the U.S. Small Business Association, more than half of Americans either own or work for a small business. The Fourth Annual Capital Region Small Business Week showcases seven events, yes, I said seven events, in five days. One of our events is BizX, that's on the screen right now. There will be four local small businesses in our local area that will present in a TEDx-style format. Cassandra Walker-Pyle, founder and CEO of 3.14 Communications, will talk about leading consciously, how personal bias plays a role in business. Daryl Carter, President and CEO of DDI Consulting, will talk about how he established his organization and how it became one of the best places to work. Francine Voorhees, Partner of Moss Adams, will talk about ways to attract and retain and advance your best and brightest talent. Dante and Dominic Morris, founders of Hoop Maps, they established a mobile app, a pickup app for basketball. They will share their experiences in how to adapt an application, and they have the single, one of the interesting things is that they pitched their app to, on Shark Tank, so that should be really interesting. Our MC for the event is the bowtie-wearing superstar, Tina Reynolds, from Uptown Studios, whom many of you know. After our presentations for BizX, we will have a, I was going to say mentoring, a networking event that will include food and drinks, so everyone is invited to attend. Next, I will go through the calendar of events. It really truly takes a team event and a team networking to put on and host these seven events in five days. The week kicks off on May 6 with the multi-chamber mixer, and this event is designed to let everyone know, if you don't already know, the great job our local Chambers of Commerce do for businesses. Burke is a member of several chambers, so you can learn about chambers if you don't already know. Network, come have some food and drink, and enjoy the evening. On May 7 is BizX that I just talked about. BizX will be at the Golden One Center at the grand entrance. On May 8 is Capital Connection. If you have an interest in money, which most people do, for a business, how you access capital, how banks and lending institutions can help a small business, that is the event for you. On May 9, we have two events, the Small Business Award Ceremony hosted by the US SBA, Small Business Administration, in the Sacramento area. So you can find out how these award-winning businesses actually got to be award-winning. Also on May 9 is May Marketplace. It is a business, small business pop-up, so there are a lot of businesses that will be there. I remember when I was here last year, I mentioned it's a great time to get that Mother's Day present, so I hope some of you did that last year, and I hope you will do it this year. On May 10 is a small business startup, so if you are, you know of or are a small business that needs to find out how to get started, what are the fundamentals of starting a business? For instance, if you need to know about having, for instance, I would say a, I'm sorry, if you're interested in learning the fundamentals of starting a business, a business plan, how you access and find out what permits you need, what order you need those permits, that is the event for you. Also on May 10 is the Mark Tank Pitch Event, sponsored by the Placer Business Resource Center, the Hacker Lab in Rockland. So it's actually three events in one. If you're interested in market research, ideas to prototype, or a networking reception that will include four pitches from businesses to the Mark Haney Group, if you want to learn how to do that, that's the event for you. So you can register for all of the events at CapitalRegionSmallBusinessWeek.org, so please go there and register. Next, I would like to invite Board Chair Kennedy down to say a few words, then we will present the board resolutions, take photographs individually, and then we would like to take a group photograph with the board.
Supervisor Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you, June. As June said, we're here today to recognize and support our small business community, from those who aspire to own their own businesses, to those brave individuals who have taken the leap and own and operate a small business. As of 2018, there are 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. This accounts for 99.9% of U.S. businesses. These numbers highlight the profound impact of entrepreneurs and small businesses on our national and our local economy. They truly are the heart and soul of Sacramento County. It is a team effort to host Capital Region Small Business Week, and today, the board recognizes the organizations and representatives that help Sacramento region, small businesses and entrepreneurs do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. So thank you all for being here, and I will turn it back to June at this point.
Thank you. Next, we will start to award the resolutions that the board so graciously has bestowed upon our group. So as I call your name and your organization, please come forward to take a photo with myself and Supervisor Kennedy. So we'll start off representing the U.S. Small Business Administration Sacramento District, David Castaneda.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Next, we will have, from SMUD, C Program Supervisor, Kiana Norman. California Capital Development Corporation Women's Center Director, Sophia Canon. Next, we have Capital Region Small Business Development Center, the SBDC Director, Scott County of Sacramento Economic Development, Lindsay Fukushima. You present your own. Okay, and I will present my own, too. Business Environmental Resource Center, June Livingston. We had a couple members of our team that weren't able to be here today, and I wanted to be able to mention them as well. BizX Team Member, Sac State College of Business Administration Graduate and Career Development Center Director, Stephanie Francis, and the Co-Working Space, COO Campus, Co-Founder, Cook Singh. So now we would like to take the group photo with the board, please. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much. I need to beg for a moment of forgiveness. I saw someone come down, and I didn't see her with her resolution. I missed Heather. Rachel, Rachel, with the Elk Grove Economic Development Department, I didn't miss you last year, I'm so sorry. Well, let's take your individual photo real quick.
All right, everybody say Elk Grove, we love you.
Elk Grove, we love you. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, June, and thank you to all of you who have made, are going to make this success and have put in so much hard work.
Busy week, yeah.
Item 51 is the presentation of resolution recognizing May is Bike Month in Sacramento County.
Is Sue Frye here? Yes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me today.
Morning.
This is my first time accepting the proclamation. I think historically Marilyn Bryant, with the Sacramento TMA, has been the representative, so I appreciate being here today. And I just want to, I'm going to show this if I can make this happen here. This is my, my first Bike to Work Day was in 2003 in Folsom, and my predecessor, I am the 50 Corridor Transportation Management Association Executive Director since January. For 20 years prior, Rebecca Garrison, my predecessor, would have been here. She was the reason I ended up on the, in the Sacramento Bee, advertising May is Bike, it was week then, and now we are all the way to May is Bike Month, so we've come a long way. As an indicator, in 2003, along the 50 corridor, we had about 500 people registered for, they registered to have one day during Bike to Work Week that they would come to, to the office on their bicycle. Today, in 2018, we had almost 2,000 people register, we had over 23,000 trips by bicycle, and we had over 435,000 miles logged. I didn't do the math, but that's a lot of greenhouse gas emissions that have been removed from the environment, and I think that is the beauty of Bike to Work Month now, is that we're encouraging people who might not otherwise consider getting out of their car and trying something different, an alternative mode of transportation, to do something different. And the real, the beauty of Bike to Work Month, and then our Regional Bike to Work Day, is that it provides us support for people to try something different, and I think you can look at some studies that show just a little bit of encouragement and support is a way to start behavior change, and that's what we do with Bike to Work Month, and then on May 16, which is Thursday, is Bike to Work Day, when we'll have Energizer stations so that people who do decide to ride to work that day, maybe they've never done it before, they have camaraderie, because they have their fellow employees and staff and their peers riding to work, too, that day, and we'll also have Energizer stations so they can stop and get a little fuel, get some water, maybe get a Cliff Bar on their way into the office, and just have a little community around cycling. And I want to personally thank the Sacramento County Department of Transportation, particularly for supporting the 50 Corridor TMA this year. This is the first year that we've received funding directly from the county to support our May is Bike Month activities, and that's been a real help, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Through that funding, we're able to participate in Energizer stations. I'm hoping to be out on the, in the Parkway a couple of times, actually, maybe a half dozen times, over May is Bike Month, giving out some goodies. We're hosting a lot of events which are advertised on the May is Bike Month website, and really fun thing that we're doing, and maybe you can participate, is on May 9, we have our Mayor's Ride. The City of Folsom and the City of Rancho Cordoba help us support the Mayor's Ride, where we start in Folsom, and we ride to the Capitol Bike Fest, which is back this year, and that is on May 9 at the Capitol, and that's thanks to the Sacramento TMA. Marilyn and her herd of volunteers are able to put that on again this year, so it'll be a really great event. It's basically a transportation fair, and I think it is always well-attended, and when we don't have it, people do complain, and so we're having it this year. As you may know, the Great Scott Ride isn't happening this year. I actually looked at last year's proclamation, and there was a lot of discussion about the Great Scott Ride. What we hope is that in 2020, we can get support for that and bring it back, because that is certainly something that everybody loves, and we would like to see it come back in 2020. So a couple of things, May 1, since we don't have our Great Scott Ride, on May 1, you're invited to a SECOG kickoff, which will be at noon at James Marshall Park, which is at 9:50. kickoff, which will be at noon at James Marshall Park, which is at 915 27th Street. And in the evening, we're hosting a 50 corridor kickoff ride, and we're starting at the Gold Point Corporate Center in Gold River. So you're welcome to join us on any of those. And what I want to do, I actually brought all of you a t-shirt, so I would like to give those to you. And I'd like to get a picture, maybe a group picture with you.
Sure.
Doing, holding your shirts up, it would be really nice.
Sure. Come on down, everybody.
Are the mayors really going to ride?
I, well, all right.
I want to know, because I know who they are.
Here's the thing, I've offered them pedicab rides and e-bike rides, so it's not, it's not certain that they're not going to ride. It's not certain that they will ride either. If you wouldn't mind, we can hold those up, that would be great. And on May 9th, you can wear this to the Mayor's Ride. And then, on May 16th, you can wear it when you're riding your bicycle. And thank you, Rick, for taking our picture.
I actually have a twofer, because unfortunately, since the last May is Bike Month, my bike was stolen. So this week, I have one week to visit a small business and rectify that, so.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I know it was spoken to, and certainly I got some feedback, and I imagine others did too, about not having the Scott Road Bike Ride. We, over the years, I think, had worked out with certainly local landowners and residents and others, and obviously agreed to be quite successful. And I think it's important, obviously, to, and whether it's done there or elsewhere, to, you know, I think, provide some opportunity for the community to see different parts of the geography of our county and our communities. And I know I've had some conversation, obviously, with county staff about this, and you know, there's a lot of logistics involved, and there's certainly some funding that goes behind it. But we kicked that off several years ago. I know Mike Penrose was the head of DOT at the time, and, you know, grew it to be successful. I think, again, worked through some of the wrinkles that you need to get with any event as you grow it. But I know there's some disappointment out there by those who participated in years past, and in fact, we're not having it this year. So, again, county obviously took the lead early on. We have partners with Folsom and El Dorado and Rancho Cordoba and Highway 50, TMA, and many others. And I just think it's important that we not lose sight of that, and obviously, funding is, you know, is, you know, a piece of that. But I think the community support that, that's engendered, and I think the ability to see, as I said, parts of our county that otherwise, people would do in a car if they did it at all, and I just think it's really important. So I guess I would encourage our staff to be in a leadership role to try to bring that back next year, so.
Great idea, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item, please.
Item 52 is the presentation of resolution recognizing April 21st through the 27th of 2019 as Mosquito and West Nile Virus Awareness Week in Sacramento County.
Is Mr. Goodman here? Welcome back.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the invitation to come back and talk a little bit about mosquitoes. I don't see the clicker. Oh, wow. Apparently for tall people. Am I just pushing this? Is that? Oh. Gotcha. And where's the clicker for the presentation? All right. So, my name is Gary Goodman. I'm the District Manager for the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. And again, appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk to you about what we're anticipating for this upcoming season, clearly, as the weather is starting to warm up, and it is becoming our mosquito timeframe. And now, Florence, it's not working. There we go. All right. So, our district is, covers all of Sacramento and Yolo County. Clearly, Sacramento County, over 1.4 million residents, and then Yolo County, a much more rural area. But Sacramento County is very diverse from the perspective of, we have the delta rural or suburban Sacramento, and then, of course, a lot of quick agriculture up in the Natomas area, specifically with rice, that creates a tremendous amount of mosquitoes for, for our district. And so, there are mosquito habitats that clearly are very easy for us to spot, wetlands, rice fields, agricultural areas, where we see green in the summertime, we know that there's water, and so that's a concern for us. But one of the bigger challenges that we have, and specifically in the summertime, are the backyard sources. And clearly, even just last week, we had rain on Monday. Monday filled up a lot of these containers that are in people's backyards, and so, one of the messages that we try to get out, specifically during this week, but throughout the entire summer, is really to try to take personal responsibility of your own yard, and make sure you're not breeding mosquitoes on your own property. So, when the sprinklers come on, and they fill up those containers, like the tires or the buckets or the dog dishes that are in your backyard, make sure you're dumping those things out once a week. It takes about one week from the time a mosquito lays an eggs to when it will come out as an adult, and if you can try to help limit your production on your own property, makes a larger difference for the greater community as a whole. But these are some of the bigger challenges that we have, specifically some of the green swimming pools as well. We visit well over 7,000 pools a year to try to make sure that they're not going to be breeding mosquitoes, and it's one of the bigger issues that we have. So, we follow what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We have a very active social media campaign, Twitter, Instagram, our Facebook program. Our website clearly has a tremendous amount of information, but we also go out to a lot of neighborhood associations and groups to try to get the information out. We also are very active in just the general media, television, radio, print, newspaper, all of those aspects of just trying to get the information out to the general public as to what that they can do to try to prevent mosquito breeding, and then, of course, protect themselves from diseases, diseases like West Nile virus. We have what we call our surveillance program. This is where we set traps out throughout the district, just to be able to try to monitor what the mosquito population is doing at any particular point in time. Is it rising? Is it decreasing? And then, part of that surveillance program is also testing for diseases, specifically West Nile virus, but we also test for Western equine encephalitis and St. Louis encephalitis. There are three diseases that we currently have endemic here to California that we actively test for on a regular basis. Then we have, go through our biological control program. At our facility down in Elk Grove, we have 23 ponds dedicated towards breeding small mosquito fish that we'll plant in areas like wetlands, rice fields, even backyard swimming pools, horse troughs, those types of things, any place where that's standing water, and these mosquito fish will, will be effective at. Then we go through our ecological management department. We work very actively with landowners, specifically U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service at Stone Lakes, California Fish and Wildlife in the bypass, and any other landowner to make sure that they can try to limit mosquito breeding on their property. We have a backhoe, heavy equipment that we essentially offer free of charge to those landowners, so that we can try to help facilitate their reduction of mosquito breeding on their property. And then, the last part of our integrated mosquito management, of course, is chemical control. So our staff goes out on a daily basis, looking for mosquito breeding sites, and then treating those accordingly. And then, of course, chemical control, when we have a large abundance of mosquitoes and/or virus activity in a particular area, we'll do adult mosquito control. Anywhere from backpack to ATV to truck, and of course, airplane, which we've done in previous past over both Sacramento and Yolo County. So in general, what diseases can mosquitoes carry? West Nile virus is clearly the one that we have the largest concern with here in the Sacramento area, but mosquitoes also transmit dengue fever, malaria, chikungunya, Zika, and at this moment in time, even dog heartworm. So that's, we want to make sure that we're getting information out to the residents, so they can protect their pets from getting things like dog heartworm. A lot of these other diseases, dengue, malaria, chikungunya, and Zika are very exotic diseases, but we get about a dozen or so cases every year. Mostly, it's for people that have traveled to an area where these diseases are endemic, and then they bring that disease back here, and we want to make sure that we don't have transmission of those particular diseases in our area. Last year, we saw a pretty sharp reduction in the number of West Nile cases, specifically in California. We went from 536 to 218, and we attributed that, actually, to the, to the fact that we had so much water last year. And so, it's a bit counterintuitive. You think, well, if you have more water, you'll have more mosquitoes. And while that's definitely true, because West Nile virus is a bird disease, it's carried by birds, and so whenever you have less water, so in drought-like situations, you have less water, which means you have a congregation of both the birds and the mosquitoes in the same place, and that tends to amplify the virus. And so, we're hoping that with this wet season, we're going to have a large mosquito control or mosquito problem, but we're hoping that the trend of having less virus activity will continue for, for this year as well. One thing I do want to try to highlight is, while these are reported cases, West Nile is a very significantly under-reported disease. A lot of people, if you exhibit symptoms in the summertime, which are typically flu-like symptoms, you may never go to the doctor and get diagnosed. So, the cases that actually get reported, over 70% of these are neuroinvasive form of the disease, very serious form, requiring hospitalization, leading to paralysis, and of course, even death. And so, CDC estimates for every case that you have a neuroinvasive, you have another 30 to 70 cases that go unreported. And so, you have a lot more people, thousands of people, that are being impacted by the symptoms of West Nile, and may not necessarily know it. So we want to make sure that we're getting the word out of how serious it can be. This is a general map of West Nile virus activity that we had in Sacramento County last year. The red circles are West Nile mosquito samples that we tested positive for in the area, and then the blue triangles are dead birds that tested positive for, for West Nile. And so, as you can see, throughout Sacramento County, specifically where we have people that reside, our residential communities of Sacramento County, we have tremendous amount of West Nile virus activity. And so, we want to make sure that people are aware of that, and that they can take the appropriate precautions to try to help minimize those impacts. So again, what are we anticipating for 2019? Again, with a very wet springtime, we're anticipating large mosquito populations. We're already starting to see some of those come out now with the warmer weather, but we're now starting to really kick off into our season. But one other concern that we have, and I have pictures of the two mosquitoes on the bottom, while, to general people, they probably look identical, they're not. We have about 24 different species of mosquitoes in Sacramento County, not all of them transmit disease. However, these two are what we call invasive species of mosquitoes. These are mosquitoes that never have been really established in California, and they're starting to make their way, they're moving up the state. And so, we have populations that are established in Southern California, but then as close to us as even Madera, which is only an hour and a half away. The problem with these particular species of mosquitoes, they have very efficient vectors of those exotic diseases like chikungunya, dengue, malaria, and Zika. And so, we don't want them to be established in our area, and we have an ongoing, active surveillance program to try to help limit, if we do find them, to be able to try to take care. So what do we ask the general public to do? We have what we call seven Ds of prevention. Drain any standing water that's on your property. Make sure you're not breeding mosquitoes in your own backyard. Dawn and dusk are times to avoid being outdoors. That's when mosquitoes tend to be most active, and specifically, the ones that transmit disease. So if you can avoid being outside during those times, that would be ideal. Dress in long sleeves and pants, always a good idea. If the less skin that you have exposed, the less you have of being bitten by a mosquito. If you can't do that, then defend yourself with a good repellent. We buy these repellent wipes by the pallet, thousands and thousands of them. We make them available at any, and to all residents. All you have to do is give us a call, be more than happy to try to drop them off at community centers. But specifically for you, the board, if you guys have events that are happening in evening time, give us a call, be more than happy to deliver the repellent out. As part of Mosquito Awareness Week this week, we have a number of different activities that are ongoing. One of those is actually delivering mosquito wipes to some of our homeless shelters and populations, because those people are at most risk, and we want to make sure that we're at least reaching out to them to make sure that they're trying to be protected. Doors and screens should be in good working order. Mosquitoes, especially in the evening time here in Sacramento County, we like to open up the windows and let the breeze, the delta breeze, come through. Mosquitoes are very small, and what they do is they pick up the carbon dioxide that you exhale when you're snoring. And so, if your screens have a small hole in them, those mosquitoes will find their way into your home, and you want to make sure that your doors and screens are in good working order. And then, of course, the last D is district personnel. Give us a call. If you're being bothered by mosquitoes, if you see standing water, if you know of a neighbor that has a bad pool, give us a call. We typically come out within 24 hours. We want to make sure that we're taking care of the problem as quickly as we possibly can, but essentially, this is what, what our jobs are. But we need the public's help in being able to try to identify where some of these sources may be. So with that, you can get more information by giving us a phone, a phone call, 1-800-429-1022, or you can visit our website, which, again, as part of Mosquito Awareness Week, we just revamped our entire website, so we have some new features there that are on that, fightthebite.net. And with that, we want to say, say thank you very much for the resolution of recognizing this as Mosquito and Vector, Mosquito and West Nile Virus Awareness Week, and always appreciate the, the board's support in, in the activities that we do.
Thank you. With that, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. So first, I have to ask, what's it like every time you walk in a room? It's like, ah, it's mosquito season, right?
Trust me, I get it a lot. Yeah, I'm not the most popular person, that's for sure.
Thank you for the report, and we, this is something the board and public receives every, every year as an appropriate reminder of the risks associated with the mosquito vectors, and what's, how best to protect ourselves. You mentioned many of the protocols when it comes to standing water, and whether it be mosquito fish or spraying, how to minimize the habitat for mosquito larval growth. What are you doing to work directly with the various reclamation districts across the county?
Yeah, as part of our ecological management program, we reach out, we actually get, and specifically, our, the whole program is designed to try to do outreach to make sure that we can find compromises with reclamation districts or any other facility that might be creating standing water and mosquito breeding in-house. And so, we have an active program. We're reaching out, we meet with them on a regular basis to try to make sure that their practices, or what their mission is trying to do, sometimes conflicts directly with what it is that we're trying to do. We don't want any standing water. I love concrete, right? Not everybody does. And so, if you have the meeting to where you can sit down and talk about that, and it's always easier to do it in the planning phase than it is necessarily once it's already built and complete. And so, we have an active outreach program with the reclamation districts, with the various cities, on building permits and those types of things, so that we can try to give feedback specifically, is to say, you know, if you were to do this, or if this were going to be seasonal, if it were to drain this way. And we have best management practices that we've developed, both in-house, and that are part of our Mosquito and Vector Control Association of California, which comprises 65 districts up and down the state of California.
So, the, the reclamation district that I'm thinking of in particular is the one in the district I represent. It's also in the neighborhood in which I live, which is in the Natomas. It's already 1,000. We have the Fisherman's Lake drainage system that you're probably well aware of, and that system, more often than not, has water that is stagnant, it doesn't move. So, in an instance like that, where you have a pretty sizable channel, are you using mosquito fish, are you using spraying, a combination of both, or nothing?
Yeah, a little bit of both. We'll plant fish, and again, our facility, we have 23 ponds, we produce about 4,000 pounds of fish a year. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. And so, we will plant those, they're all free of charge. We want to make sure, if we've got standing water, that we're treating it appropriately. And a lot of times, the fish are excellent, voracious eaters of mosquitoes, and so, they're, they're very effective at doing their job. But our technician works in each one of these areas. We have 35 different zone technicians, and they'll go out, and so they know their zones. And so, if they see standing water, they check these things, and our goal is to try to check every source that we have within a two-week period. So that way, we're going out to that, we're dipping that, we're making sure it's not producing mosquitoes. But a lot of times, when people see standing water, and you see large areas, mosquitoes are very small, and they actually have what we call a breathing tube, essentially. They have to go to the surface of the water so they can breathe. So if you have a lot of open water, their wave action of just, isn't very conducive to breeding mosquitoes, which is why you tend not to see them really in large lakes or streams or creeks, things like that, where there's moving water, they need that really stagnant water. And so, if it's got some open areas, typically mosquito fish will do well. Our biggest concern is when you have stagnant water with that level of vegetation, that gives them a hiding place to go to. And in a place like that, we plant fish, and they're very effective. If that's not going to be effective, we have materials that we can put out there that can help reduce the mosquito population as well.
Thank you.
I think I have, okay, Supervisor Peters.
I had an easy question. So, do mosquitoes, are they like neighborhood insects, or do they breed in your neighbor's backyard and go to Yolo County? I mean, do they, how much do they get around?
We send them to Yolo County.
Yes, they all come from Yolo, yeah. My presentation to Yolo County, they all come from Sacramento County. Yes, unfortunately, mosquitoes don't necessarily stay where they are. It depends on the species. We have certain mosquitoes that breed in neighborhoods, we call house mosquitoes, and their typical flight range is probably only maybe about a quarter mile. We have some mosquitoes that can travel up to 10 miles in an evening. So it just depends on the species that we're worried about. The ones that transmit virus activity are going to tend, tend to stay relatively local. So if they're, if they're bred in your backyard, they'll have an impact on your general neighbors. But, but still, that, you know, one bad swimming pool produces thousands of mosquitoes, have an impact on an entire neighborhood, reaching out a quarter mile. That's a lot of residents that have the impact too.
Thank you.
I have one question. You talked about, sometimes we have to do aerial spraying, and that sometimes gives people rise of concern. What do we do to inform the public of what areas we're spraying, when we're spraying, and what the safety is of that activity?
Absolutely. On our website, we have a tremendous amount of information on, on the products that we use and the means that we do that. We also have, you can sign up for notifications, so if we're doing any adult mosquito control in your zip code, then every day, essentially, we, we evaluate information on a daily basis. So we get traps back today that are going to indicate what we're going to do tonight, because we want to try to react as quickly as we possibly can. But you can But you can sign up on our website, and then if we do any work in your zip code, then we'll send you an email letting you know where that is. We provide maps on our website, and we'll send that out in the email as well. We do press releases, and so as we start to get to an issue where we start to find significant amount of West Nile virus in a particular area, then we reach out to the local cities, all of our neighborhood associations, by just letting them know we're seeing a problem. And then as we start to elevate or start to consider aerial applications, we'll elevate what those messages are, telling people that this is something that's being considered. Typically, it takes about a week or two for us to kind of look logistically at all of the factors to make sure that we're going to do aerial spraying. We recognize it is really our last resort, it's not something that we really want to do. There's a lot of phone calls, and a lot of people are just concerned about the issues associated with that. And we understand, get that completely. So we want to try to be as transparent as we possibly can in making sure that we're getting the information out to the general public. But most of it is on our social media, press releases, and then of course outreach to neighborhood associations, elected officials to try to help disseminate that information as well, and of course, the media.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You mentioned that there's a small percentage of people that have that neurological, yeah, I guess I would call it a violent neurological response.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of friends who had West Nile and were partial, one was partially paralyzed, and it was a happy ending. She came back, but it was nip and tuck for a while. They weren't sure how she was going to do. The question I have is, is there a way, there's no way to know if you're predisposed to that? And once a human, you said the majority are carriers, but they just carry it, they don't, they're not contagious, like animals and humans who have been bit and carried but don't have that reaction, do they, can they potentially pass that on, or do they just carry it? Are they like a host forever, or does it impact their health in any way?
Those are all excellent questions. Let me see if I can tackle them. First, West Nile is a bird disease. So essentially, it is carried by the birds. A mosquito bites an infected bird, picks it up, and then bites another bird, passes it on, or bites a human or a horse, and then can pass it on. A mosquito cannot bite a human and pick up the disease to pass it on. So we're known as what we call dead-end hosts from that perspective. For the horse population, there is a vaccine. They're working on a vaccine for humans, but it takes a significant amount of time. The Zika issue that we had a few years ago has kind of pushed a little bit more from the vaccine production, but again, that's going to take a few years to be able to get to that point. There is a vaccine for horses, and I recommend any horse owner to get their horse vaccinated, because over 50% of horses that get West Nile will die from it, and it's a very painful death associated with the horses. So we want to make sure that people understand that. But a mosquito, so for a lot of people that get West Nile, you'll get bit by an infected mosquito, and your body reacts just like any other virus, it tries to fight it off, and you may not ever know that you ever had it. They are starting to get a little bit more information in terms of general health. So those folks that are diabetic tend to have a more serious reaction than those that are not, and so, but a lot of the medical issues are still starting to come out. We haven't had enough research time to be able to try to determine what the long-term effects of those are. There was a study that was done by California Department of Public Health back in '05, where they looked at folks that had exhibited symptoms of West Nile, and redid an interview with them one year later. And over 50% of those folks that had symptoms from West Nile, so just like your friend with the paralysis, were still exhibiting some level of symptom a year later. So we want to make sure that people recognize it is a very serious disease, and not to take it lightly, and what the long-term impacts of having that disease. Clearly, it's going to weaken your immune system to some extent. Hopefully, you're able to bounce back. We don't really know what the long-term effects are, because it's really only been in the United States for 20 years now. So there's still a lot more work that needs to be done from a medical standpoint, but we also want to make sure that people can take very simple measures to try to protect themselves. Don't breed mosquitoes in your own yard, put on repellent to make sure that you're not being bitten.
It's really, what you do is so important, even though mosquitoes are small, they're cr-
Yeah, I'm a big hit at parties, but, yes, we appreciate the fact that we're getting the word out, because we want people to be aware of the concerns that are out there. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We have this to add your collection.
Will do. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't usually get applause.
Okay, a funny mosquito guy, who knew?
Item 53 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing May 2, 2019 as the Big Day of Giving in Sacramento County.
All right, and is Carrie Wood here?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Carrie Wood with the Sacramento Region Community Foundation, and I'm here to talk to you about the Big Day of Giving, which is next week, May 2. I mean, we all survive Mosquito Week, we have lots of big plans ahead. And what Big Day of Giving is, is an opportunity for the community to rally around philanthropy and supporting the over 600 nonprofits that are participating in Big Day of Giving. And I have two nonprofit organizations represented here with me today, they're going to introduce themselves.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jackie England, and I am with Sacramento Roller Derby. I am the Community Outreach and Fundraising Coordinator.
Hi, my name's Anna Allard. I'm the Development Associate with the Sacramento Native American Health Center, and we're excited to be participating this year.
Okay. Thank you. We just wanted to demonstrate, we have so many nonprofits doing so much for this community, for this county. And in the past, we've raised, this is over seven years since the inception of Big Day of Giving, over $30 million. Last year alone, we raised 7.4 million in one day. Sacramento County, by the way, raised about 3.4 million, so just know, that's a lot to be proud of for this county. And we processed 36,000 donations in one day. So we're very proud of that fact, it takes all of us to make this happen, and we just want to thank you for your support. So again, May 2, Big Day of Giving. Prescheduled giving is open now, and that's bigdayofgiving.org. And this is an opportunity for anyone to give a gift of $15 and up. Just a quick note, 60% of the gifts that have been given in the past have been between $15 and $50. So that's a lot of gifts to process, but it's done a tremendous amount for our region and for this county. And so we would like to get a picture, if we may, with the resolution.
So is your motto, give early, give often? Is that what it is?
Absolutely. Thank you.
There you go. Good luck.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Carrie.
I spent a week on vacation, I've smiled more today than I did the entire week.
You better go to a different vacation spot.
Sounds like a good vacation.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, for item 54, this is the Resolution Extending the Term of Employment of Navdeep S. Gill as County Executive. A requirement of California State Government Code Section 54957 requires the terms and conditions of employment for executive-level appointments be made in a public meeting and cannot be part of the consent calendar. It also allows for public comment.
All right, Mr. Gill, you have a presentation, or?
No, sir.
No, sir? Is there any comments or questions of the board? Mr. Natale.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to just acknowledge that the job of the county executive is a big job, this is a big organization with a big span of control and requirements to be met, and certainly, you know, demands a lot of the person who occupies that seat, and obviously NAV is the current county executive, and under this would be, you know, extended. I just wanted to, though, raise, certainly in the context, acknowledging, you know, a satisfactory performance, and obviously NAV keeps each of us apprised on a real regular basis of things that he's working on behalf of the board, behalf of the county, his, you know, coordination with both the internal portions of the county as relates departments and all the various, as I said, span of control and moving parts there, but certainly the interface with the community. But I did, again, and this is the context, obviously in a public context, this is the appropriate time to talk about it, that in recent years, we've utilized acknowledging the backdrop of the charter, a contract, which had a term, and certainly agreed upon components, certainly with the county executive and this board. With this particular matters before us today, we're reverting back to the county charter, which is always the backdrop and in its provisions. And I know that, you know, as I've thought about this, I felt certainly compelled to raise that, because I think when you have that term, certainly job security is very important, and whether it's to any one of us, or to NAV, or to any other member of this organization. And I think the contract term is one which allows this board, working daily though with the county executive, to visit at certain junctures, you know, the contract provisions and so forth. This outlines that very well, it does provide for obviously the compensation, but also the relationships, you know, as it relates to the charter and, I guess what this boils down to, though, is this basically is an evergreen contract. It does allow us, obviously, we're working constantly with the incumbent, and again, this is not a reflection on that relationship, but I think over the last, you know, eight or nine years, we've gone to a set term, and now we're going back to this particular approach, which in essence, unless the board chooses, and then there are, there's provisions for that, unless the county executive chooses to either retire or leave that position, requires severance. And I guess, which was different than what the charter does not require that, and I just wanted to point that out. It felt very important, again, this is not a reflection, I've chatted with NAV about this about a bit anyway, and so he didn't know I was doing this, I was going to bring it up today, but I wanted to point this out, because it raises a level of concern for me as it relates to this board and future boards' opportunity, and to not only visit on a regular basis, and certainly to analyze performance and to work on things together, because again, this is a team, there's no doubt about that. But I felt necessary to raise that today, and as we have any further discussion, obviously maybe reflected in what I'll be doing on this matter before us today.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I also agree with Mr. Natale that this is a big job. The county has a $4 billion-plus budget, and many, many different departments. And one of the things that I have appreciated the most about Mr. Gill's style is that he presents us with an annual work plan, and then monthly updates. And so at any time, we're open to discussing the work plan with him and how it's coming along, and it's been not only a good reminder to us on a monthly basis, but it's just a good way to keep track of what's going on in the county. I have found him to be a very good problem solver within the county, and with, and I've appreciated his attention to the unincorporated county, particularly, his background as a city manager, not a city manager, at a city, a CFO there, has given him a lot of knowledge about services for the unincorporated county. So I'm very appreciative of all the work he's done, and I think it should be kept in a, in the resolution form.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I certainly don't dispute that it's a tough job, being a head of an organization like the County of Sacramento, the size of it is as it is, and the complexities of county governance. I guess I'm going to be a bit of a departing opinion here today, and I guess the context of my statements is really couched in one of disappointment. And first of all, I'm kind of disappointed, not kind of disappointed, I am disappointed that the decision by the totality of the board in closed session to consider this was done without all of us. So that has to do with the fact that I was out of town, and when there's something as important as whether or not to extend a contract for the top personnel, the head of this organization from an administrative standpoint, and to do it without the totality of the board, I think quite frankly speaks to the persons seeking the contract extension, and whether or not that really expresses the exercise of good judgment to do it that way. So I will be abstaining from the vote today, because I was not part of the closed session discussion, and that's not unusual for those of you that may not be as familiar with Robert's Rules of Order or protocols when it comes to how we vote and why we vote the way we do. But typically, when a member of this board is absent from a discussion, whether it be an open session or closed, oftentimes that board member will abstain from the vote. And abstention is, and for those, again, that aren't as familiar with these types of things, an abstention is as good as a no vote. If I had been in those discussions, I think it would have been, it would have behooved us, and perhaps the discussion did occur, to really think carefully about the compensation package for this position. My opinion is, I think it's way too high. It's 311,000, that's its top step, is, comes with a very generous car allowance, comes with a very generous allowance for incidental costs, and this is coming at a time when the county CEO is coming to each of us to express that be prepared, board, not just this budget cycle, but in the foreseeable future. We're going to have to perhaps consider cuts to important programs. So I can't really reconcile that, but I wanted to make sure that I spoke my mind, was very honest with NAV, was very honest with my colleagues, and very honest with the public before just registering an abstention.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
I want to acknowledge that I was not here when you were brought on board permanently, I think it was a year before. But since I've been here, I feel so comfortable working with you, NAV. I think you're an amazing county executive. You've done a really good job at problem solving and looking for efficiencies, particularly after an economic downturn where the entire county basically had to do a lot of layoffs and contract and merge a lot of departments, and customer service was impacted. You came out of that looking for efficiencies and dealing with customer service issues, trying to figure out how we can rebuild and expand quickly and efficiently so that we can improve customer service. Because one of the things I remember when I came on board was, I'm hearing that customer service is a real problem at the county, and we got to change that. I mean, that's something we have to change. And you were so supportive, and even to the, I'll just say, you were so supportive. We've worked hard on that. These are challenging times, and there's a lot of important, big costs coming along to the county, and I have appreciated how you have respected that and tried to position us so that the hits would be minimized and that we could find our way through it. My understanding is that you were not asking for an increase. I wasn't part of your original package, but this is the same package that you were working with, this is just extending your contract. And I'm, I think you deserve to be acknowledged for the good work that you've done at the county, and I want to personally thank you for it.
Thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just to follow on, certainly hearing from my colleagues, I want to, you know, sort of express appreciation for the leadership, and, you know, I'm not prepared to have a vote of no confidence here today, but that's not what my intent was. I want to be clear about it, that, and Supervisor Peters spoke to it, it was a resolution versus the contract, and I do think that contracts are healthy, it can be for a set term. We didn't have that conversation about that, but, you know, that three-to-five-year range, I think prior to Mr. Gill, we had a five-year contract, and obviously, he's worked on a contract for the, you know, for the last couple of years, and, you know, have appreciated that. So I just wanted to be clear about that, and I think it's important certainly to, for this board, whatever our views are, to, you know, we interact every day just about with the county executive, and obviously with the workforce, provides the services and programs here. So again, you know, that relationship is very, very important, and again, recognizing what's been said here, but I wanted to just add that to what I had said previously. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Oh, I thought.
Yes.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to- I just wanted to throw in a few comments. First of all, Supervisor Nattoli, thank you for bringing up that issue. It's one that we wrestle with every time we come up with what we do about us, you know, whether you go contract or charter, there are pros and cons to both sides. We've, you and I have discussed it personally, we've discussed it as a board over the years. And again, I could argue either side. The, you know, as far as this particular instance goes, Mr. Gill, you know, you and I have not always agreed over the last few years, particularly, and I'll be specific, we had significant issues when it came to Mental Health Services Act dollars and our interaction with the City of Sacramento. And I think that that was publicly known and seen. And I think that, to your credit, you were able to pivot on that. And you have been very supportive in that. And I will say that we now have a better relationship on that particular issue with the biggest city in our region than we have ever had. So, regardless of where it started, it's where we are today that is what's most important. On the issue of the Office of Inspector General, you and I have, you know, kind of rubbed sometimes. And that's, you know, adults can disagree and agree. It's a very difficult job that's been set up here, but you have not only five strong personalities, you have five elected officials who have varying degrees or varying beliefs and value systems and ideologies. And it's difficult to weigh that as any CEO. And we represent very diverse districts. So, we're not always going to agree and, you know, for you to have a thousand percent batting average, just for all of us, would be virtually impossible. However, I will say that on, you know, the one thing that I do appreciate, and I've only had the privilege of representing this district, working with two now CEOs. In most CEO situations though, whether when I was on a school board, it was superintendent or when I've been in the private sector, you see an evaluation period that's pretty much annual, if that, sometimes more than, less than that, less frequently than that. What I have appreciated is the work plan was brought up. We have an evaluation process in this county now among the board and the CEO that is, it's ongoing. It never stops. We see the work plan, which by the way, part of the work plan is to see to it that there is an OIG in place and that is on the work plan. And we will go forward with that and as well as dealing with just structurally changing Sacramento County so that it better meets the needs of our constituents. So, that has been going on and continues to go on. So, that is why, and the fact that we are not increasing compensation or benefits, but this is strictly a extension of the relationship and one that can be entered into and it can be ended by either party at any given time. So, that, for those reasons, I am supportive of the resolution. And with that, if we have no more board comments, I have Mr. Ted Samara. Chair Kennedy.
Morning.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the 3,800 members we represent here in Sacramento County. My name's Ted Samara. I'm the Executive Director of United Public Employees. You know, when I first heard about this contract coming up and I read it on the website and I seen the compensation package, I was disheartened. We just got into negotiations for your employees, the same employees that are working on customer service, the same employees that are bringing services to help aid the homeless, some of the most unfortunate families, abused children. And you gave these folks a raise that are equivalent to about 25 cents. These are the individuals that are making this county function. When you have someone at the top that you have to go through layers to meet with, that sends a message to someone that sits in my position as the Executive Director. And the reason why I would want to meet with someone of a position of a CEO is because those layers that I met with couldn't find us any resolution, none whatsoever. You know, we got classification studies going on as a result of maintaining labor peace with this county. And the position of this county is let's not talk about the work they do, let's talk about where they sit in as far as the local labor market would go. But when you recruit for this position or for any of these individuals' positions that sit behind them, you go statewide, nationwide. You pay top dollar, $311,000, $311,000. In three years, this individual will make more, almost close to a million dollars, to where some of my members, it'll take them a lifetime to make that. But they come to work every day to provide a service for your constituents in each and one of your districts. And they do it open-heartedly because they believe in what they do. It's just a shame and it's disheartening. You want to talk about efficiency? Talk about cutting from the top. I'm hearing grumblings, I'm hearing the rumors, these next couple of years are gonna be bad years. Coincidentally, as it leads up to what? Contract negotiations, to where this same board will come back and say, "Well, we're gonna have to lay you off. We're gonna have to lay your members off, Ted, so we can keep rolling." Think about that, because I will be back. And next time I'm back, we'll fill this chamber with red and you'll hear from my members. You know, this last contract wasn't about the monies, it was about working environment, a working environment that is created with hostility by upper management that continue to suppress our membership in the eyes of customer service, because that is their barking orders that they are receiving from top management. You want culture change in this county? It needs to start here. It needs to start with you on your decision-making. $311,000, you should be ashamed of yourselves because some of your employees, when they get off of work, they gotta take a day off to get some welfare benefits because that's the position you put them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. One more thing I did not bring up and that I wanted to say that I do commend Mr. Gill for, because one of the key jobs of any executive, CEO, whether it's government, private sector, doesn't matter, is to identify the right people in the right positions. And I will give Mr. Gill credit in the last very short period of time in bringing on individuals who have really started to change the way we've been doing business as a county or looked at things differently. I mean, we've, you've hired an airport director who is recognized across the country as a leader in the field and is just doing a great job. You've brought on Mr. Wagstaff reluctantly out of retirement and who is trusted throughout the state of California as a subject matter expert in many subjects. Dr. Bealenson, you've brought from, all the way from Maryland, who has, is not only respected across the country, but has, in his short period of time being back in Sacramento, has become beloved in our community. You hired a registrar of voters that got us through a very difficult vote season because of the fact that we were the biggest county to participate for the first time in the Voter Choice Act and it went off darn near flawlessly. And those were some areas, particularly in the area of Department of Health Services and voter registrar, that I know that District Two received the greatest amount of complaints about regularly and I'm not getting those complaints at this time. So, surrounding yourself and hiring the right people is a talent that I want to commend you for as well, which I did not mention before. Thank you. Is there any board member?
I would move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Serna abstaining and Supervisor Nattoli voting against.
Next item, please.
Item 55 is the public hearing on the annexation of assessors' parcel numbers 2030050057 and 2030050058 to Zone Four of the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District and the levy of assessments. Approve the advance funding agreement, direct the clerk to tabulate the assessment ballot and annex the territory to the district and confirm the levy of assessments.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Dorothy Codani and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the County Engineering Division. And I'm here to present the annexation of parcel numbers 203005057 and 2058 to the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District. This district was formed in 1994 to fund maintenance of public landscape corridors, roadway landscape medians and open space. The two commercial parcels, which are the subject of today's items, are located on the west side of Watt Avenue, north of Elverda Road, and a condition of approval for the parcel map required annexation to the district. So therefore, a notice and assessment ballot were mailed to the property owner on March 7th. And if there are no questions from your board, we ask to proceed on the first two of the listed recommended actions, the first being to recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to SEQA and the second to adopt the Resolution One, which pertains to funding for the advance funding agreement for the annexation costs that are associated with this effort.
Other than, I have no questions from the board at this time. Proceed.
Oh, so, did you want?
Did you want a separate motion?
Yes, for the first resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present?
Thank you. And at this point, then, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, close the public hearing and direct the staff to tabulate the return protest ballot.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that'd like to address this issue at this time? Please come forward. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Or no, we need to proceed with the tabulation, right?
Now you need me to tabulate. Am I gonna get a drum roll?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a ballot from SPE Sacramento Antelope LLC on parcels ending in 057 and 058, site address 8135 Watt Avenue, Antelope, California 95843, and we have a yes vote. And that concludes the ballot.
Yeah, thank you very much. Since there is no majority protest, then we request that the board adopt the attached resolution. And there are some filings on the resolution and I can read those in and then have the board take action. So therefore, at the close of the public hearing, the board receives zero oral and written protests, which the board has duly considered. One assessment ballot was returned by the close of the public hearing today, which represents 100% of the property owners. 100% of the returned ballots are in favor of the proposed assessment and 0% are opposed. And so therefore, we recommend that the board adopt the resolution annexing these parcels to the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 56, authority to execute endowment management agreement, conservation easement and declaration of covenants and restrictions with Center for Natural Lands Management for the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve, authorize payment of initial and capital fund and endowment fund to center and execute licenses to Sacramento County Water Agency and Sacramento Area Sanitation District.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, honorable board members. I'm Clark Whitten, Mather Program Manager, and I'm before you today to present the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve easement, declaration of covenants and restrictions, endowment agreement and approval of licenses for SASD and SCWA. First, I'd like to cover some history of the decisions and the actions over the past 28 years that have led us to today's item. In 1991, the board endorsed a comprehensive reuse plan for Mather. The plan included roughly about 700 acres of open space to preserve and it predated federal endangered listing of the ferry in Tadpole Shant. In 1993, the Air Force issued the Record of Decision, the ROD. The ROD required certain wetlands on certain properties be maintained consistent with a management plan to be approved later by the federal regulators. Between 2004 and 2006, the county conducted a two-year stakeholder process with the regulatory community, preservation advocates and Mather residents. The two-year process resulted in an agreed-upon 1,070-acre preserve. Then, in 2006, the county contracted with EDO to develop the Mather Wetlands Management Plan. The collaborative process resulted in a management plan for even a larger preserve of 1,272 acres. Between 2004 and 2014, the county issued an opportunity sites request for qualifications that included a potential university and 130-acre sports complex. We also commenced federal permitting for the EIS and finalized the majority of the property transfers for the preserve. In 2015, we partially met the land transfer obligations from the Air Force from the 1993 ROD by approving, by your board approving, the Wetlands Management Plan and release of a request for qualifications for a preserve manager. Then in 2015, after significant public testimony during the adjacent Mather Field Project, that's the 800-acre master plan community that's adjacent to the preserve, the board directed staff to reengage and resolve outstanding issues with the community and interest groups. And lastly, in 2015, the board approved selection of the accredited and certified Center for Natural Lands Management, CNLM, as a Mather Preserve Manager. In 2016, the board approved a revised EIR for Mather Field, again, the adjacent master plan community, that it included an additional preservation of 53 more acres to now total 1,342 acres. In 2017, the board approved up to a 10-year contract for CNLM to be the preserve manager. And an important point, the permanent preserve manager item will be brought back to the Board of Supervisors in maybe the next two to three years, when enough data has been gathered to run what's called a management PAR, Property Analysis Record, which we are expecting to be approximately $10 to $12 million. Finally, in 2018, the board approved renaming the Mather Wetland Preserve the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve. This is Mather in 1990. As you can see, the preserve area, it doesn't look too good. It's crisscrossed with roads and paths from the Air Force training. So, when we got it, to improve this proposed preserve area, the county commenced working on several key things. First, establishment of the Wetlands Management Plan. The management plan guides the stewardship of the preserve. And two, as a result of stakeholder input, we proactively contracted with a nationally-recognized preserve manager, CNLM, to manage the preserve. Since 1991, the county's done some pretty amazing things. We've established a regional park ranger patrol at a cost of $675,000 to date. We proactively commenced preserve management at a cost of $325,000 to date. We spent several hundred thousand dollars creating the Wetlands Management Plan and the county has voluntarily increased the preserve acreage above the acreage required by the federal regulators. We've constructed and repaired over $150,000 of the $250,000 budget. budget for preserve fencing. We elected not to pursue $40 to $50 million in county revenue from aggregate and gold mining that is adjacent to the housing, between the housing and the runway. We've rerouted the proposed Douglas extension from next to Independence at Mather to next to the runway. We've rerouted Zimphandell two separate times from the original alignment. We facilitated invasive weed surveys and paid for invasive weed treatments. We coordinated controlled burns that have reduced invasive weeds and thatch. And since the early 2000s, the county and our government partners have provided well over $3 million in funding for the Splash Program to educate 4th and 5th graders about vernal pools and their role in the ecosystem at Mather. So this is an aerial within the last six months of Mather. As you can see, the 1990, 2019, you can see our collaborative efforts have helped the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve heal and improve from past activities. The Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve has been transformed into an outdoor classroom and treasured regional amenity. The yellow crustacean is, that is fairy shrimp. Pretty good, Kelly, right?
Right.
And the gal getting, doing the, getting, she has a take permit?
Right.
This is a graphic that shows the 1,342 acres of the Isla M. Collin Preserve. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing how big it is, and, you know, we're very proud of what it's taken to get here. So how do we make this happen and protect the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve? First, I'd ask this board to approve the recordation of the conservation easement, which thankfully Supervisor Natoli caught a typo, a pretty major typo. It is 1,342 acres, not 342 acres.
I was worried about that loss of 1,000 acres.
Yeah. So I thank you, Don. It completes the requirements of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Biological Opinion that was dated January 24, 2012. Also, approve the endowment management agreement that provides the mechanism for CNLM to create a non-wasting endowment that provides funding for monitoring and enforcement of the preserve. The preserve management endowment, which again is going to come later in the next two to three years, is really at the discretion of the federal regulators, and it's when enough data has been gathered to know what that is. Lastly, approve licenses in lieu of easements for SASD and SCWA for their facilities within the preserve. Finally, we have several key partners that have been integral to getting us to this point, and each partner would like to address the board and share their thoughts. We did have Phil Rodriguez scheduled. I don't see him. Oh. I had my phone silenced, so I couldn't get the phone call from Phil saying he was going to be late, but...
We appreciate that, by the way.
So first off, we have Phil Rodriguez.
Thank you, Clark. Chairman Kennedy, members of the board, Phil Rodriguez, Lewis Group of Companies, representing Mather South LLC. We're the developer partnering with the county on the Mather South project, which is just to the east of the preserve area. I want to applaud staff's efforts to get this conservation easement to you. It's a long journey, a long process, a lot of hard work and effort has been put into this. A lot of consideration for all of the various stakeholders that are out in the, in the arena, if you will, with respect to the sensitivity to environmental resources, the partnership with the U.S. federal government, the Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I just applaud all of these efforts. You know, the Mather South project will be a major contributor to the funding of this preserve and its maintenance. So we are looking forward to checking the box, moving to the next step in our journey to develop a really thriving, sustainable community in Mather South. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Next up is Liz Bellis, our Director of Regional Parks.
Good morning. I'm here, obviously, in support of this item. I'm looking forward to continuing our partnership with Center for Natural Lands Management, building the relationships with our stakeholders and our neighbors, realizing that we have the shared goal of preserving this amazing regional asset. There are three key things that Regional Parks is working towards regarding the preserve, the first being the completion of a public access plan. We have started working on that. We have a technical assistance grant from National Park Service to facilitate that, and we are well underway. The second is to protect the preserve from illegal trespass. We ranger staff have been working with the neighbors, as well as Central for Natural Lands Management, to identify areas where there are illegal trespass and to develop a plan on how we can address those issues. And the third would be to develop an invasive plant management plan for the preserve. Did you have any questions? Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Next up, we have Cindy Nickel, Director of Airports.
Good morning, supervisors, and thanks for your comments earlier. I wanted to just speak to the qualifications of the Center for Natural Lands Management. As you may know, they've been a partner with the county since 2007, when they were selected to be the preserve manager for Pritchard Lake Preserve at Sacramento International Airport. Like this process, CNLM emerged as highly professional with very qualified staff and highly accredited by the National Land Trust Accreditation Commission. CNLM has worked diligently with us to make sure that they are both meeting the intended purpose of the preserve in protecting various species, but also making sure that it's compatible with the adjacent operations of the airport. Their diligence, willingness to be creative in working with all stakeholders, and their professionalism has been highly appreciated, and we support this item. Thank you. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Deborah Rogers, who is with the Center for Natural Lands Management.
Good morning, supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to begin to introduce to you today our organization, the Center for Natural Lands Management, and also want to say on behalf of that organization, we're delighted to be part of the planning team, and it takes a team to go towards protecting and preserving this very, obviously iconic and natural resource known as the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve. Our organization actually started around here, about 30 years ago. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and our organization was started by a then-young woman who had recently left a very secure job with what was then called the Department of Fish and Game, because she saw the need to establish an organization such as ours that would have a sole focus and core mission on doing exactly this, that is professionally managing with appropriate, science-based conservation staff those very rare and precious natural resources, especially those, those natural resources that had endangered species and sensitive wetlands of the U.S. And that's our core mission. That's our niche within the conservation community. Since that time, about 30 years ago, we've acquired over 100 preserves in the state of California, all up and down the state. We manage those preserves both under fee title ownership, as well as, as mentioned for the Pritchard Lake and Willie Wetlands Preserve, through holding a conservation easement and then managing those preserves, as well as managing the endowments that are needed to provide that continuing revenue source. Of those 100 preserves, they probably cover over 70,000 acres. We also have moved into the state of Washington, where we now own and manage critical habitat for several endangered species there of about 1,500 acres. But we're not just, I guess you would say, a medium-sized nonprofit organization in the West Coast. We're actually also a local organization, because we have a high number of preserves in the greater Sacramento area, and we have local field biologists and conservation science staff here. And as has been mentioned, we have been managing, along with our county partners and other stakeholders, the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve since 2016. It's not done, and it will never be done. It's an ongoing process. But we do recognize this resolution here today as an important next, next step in protecting the preserve, because it will give us in the county the essential legal foundation from which to provide specific prohibited activities that could undermine the conservation values. So we do look forward with great excitement towards that next step.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly Berry, who is going to say a few words from David Segenthaler. David was, is with National Park Service, and we worked, gosh, we've been working with David for about the last 14 years. Unfortunately, he scheduled a trip to go to Europe, so he can't be here, but...
Not an opportunity for him.
I know. Kelly is with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we've worked with Kelly for a long time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Good morning to the board chair and members of the board. And again, as Clark said, I am Kelly Berry with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Office. I am the chief of the Sacramento Valley Division. And on behalf of David Segenthaler of the National Park Service, who, as we know, is not in attendance today, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Sacramento office, we would like to commend the county staff, Clark Witten, Rick Bellas, the Parks Department, and others on their work thus far to preserve in perpetuity the area now known as the Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve. This work includes recording these conservation mechanisms that are before you today to help preserve this unique and beautiful 1,342-acre preserve ecosystem in Sacramento County. As you all know, on January 24, 2012, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service issued a biological opinion to the United States Air Force, and that federal action was the transfer of Mather Field, at the time, Air Force Base, to Sacramento County for the continued operation of a commercial airport, the future development around the airport, and of course, the preservation of this biologically important 1,342-acre preserve. This preserve is to be established for the preservation and for the enjoyment of the people of the United States. And as we've already heard today, this property supports many federally listed species, such as the vernal pool fairy shrimp, vernal pool tadpole shrimp, orkut grasses, and many other species that are important to this region. So a sincere thank you to everyone that has been involved in this collaborative effort today to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Natoli.
Great. Well, thanks, Clark, and thanks to all of the presenters this morning. We're approaching 26 years post-closure at Mather, and obviously, there's been a number of milestones along the way and many to come yet, but I will just say this is a, this is a big one in the annals of certainly the history of Mather, and particularly as it relates to what is, is before us today in the Isla Collin Preserve. I did want to certainly acknowledge the work of county staff, many of whom are in the room, some who have obviously retired from county service, and, and then again, all the partners that have worked so very long and hard to, not only bring this, bring this conservation easement and all the various attachments to us, but certainly the work that's gone on out in the field. And I will just say that that's been a preeminent concern, because I do, as I've said from this dais before, and I know it's been said in different ways this morning, this is truly a treasure. Mather came to us, obviously, you know, 5,000-plus, nearly 6,000 acres, a lot of uses, and then reuses to follow on to the previous uses, and it's a mixture. And even hearing from the speakers this morning, obviously, we have those who are in the business of building houses, we have those who are certainly in operations of our airports, and all the other aspects of Mather that are part of daily life. But this particular segment of Mather, the now 1,342 acres, as I said, is a treasure, but it's certainly, it's elemental to the preservation, but also to the landscape there. And I appreciate the photographs, although I think there were different seasons they were taken, but nonetheless, I think the graphic was one that showed, obviously, some of the trails and roads and some of the other training activities that went on at Mather pre-closure. So I want to certainly thank all those that have been involved. I did have just a couple of questions, and I appreciate Clark's clarification on the one part of grand deed. And you touched on it a couple of times in your presentation, Clark, and I know I've talked to Troy Givens about this as well. In the attachment two on page, I believe it's page four, it calls out for the management plan, complying with the management plan, and it talks about the stewardship endowment, and it kind of starts over this period of time where I think you spoke to the property analysis record and being back to this board within a 24- to 36-month period. This gives 10 years for that, and that 10 years seems that's never, we've never lost any years on that time count going back to, and I'll let you weigh in here. So I want to be clear about that, because as we talked about the, you know, the short-term preserve management, but also some of the other milestones that relate particularly to the Isla Collin Preserve, I want to be clear about what that timeframe sets out and how it comports with, obviously, what you put on the record here today, if you could.
I appreciate the question, Supervisor Natoli. We are in year three of 10. When we negotiated with the Fish and Wildlife Service the 10 years, no one really knew how long it would really take to, to get the data, to then use that data to act, you know, to accurately decide what needs, the management tools that needed to be applied. So very out-of-the-box for U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Corps of Engineers to allow us to partner with them to try to figure it out. So again, we're in year three-ish, and when staff says two to three years, you know, I'm not an expert in preserve management, but that's what the experts are telling me, they think, it could go longer, and so that's why we built in the 10 years. We have to do it within 10 years.
Right. But we've had, we've been working on it for three, and that's all good work, and it's all part of the body of information that we're, you know, certainly utilizing day-to-day, but also assimilating. So because once this conservation easement is filed and recorded, then the 10 years starts to count, at least as it relates to item J in the agreement. Understand what you just said, so why wouldn't we put seven? If we give ourselves 10, why wouldn't we put seven there if we weren't kind of starting over, so to speak? I put that out there again. Again, and I appreciate what you said, and recognition, obviously, there's a lot of work, but seven years, you know, if I used the 10 previously, that was my point earlier, so, and you've answered it. So would that be acceptable to the parties, again, this before us today, for our consideration?
As, as I've said, U.S. Fish and Wildlife and National Park Service and the Corps of Engineers, they've been very flexible with us. So that is certainly something that we could look at and, and capture.
Okay, because I'd like, again, the parties are here, and again, I can say I don't want to put any undue pressure, but I think it's important to put some pressure, and that keeps us, you know, all of our feet to the, all of our feet to the fire. And obviously, we've done a lot of good work, and that's reflected here. And again, so I don't want to take away from that today at all, but I just, in my view, as I read this, that kind of stuck out to me because it's kind of like you restarted the clock when this gets filed, and no, somebody told me 10 years ago, you know, 10 years, three years ago, or even sooner than that, or later than that. But nonetheless, I just, I'd like to capture that. So if that's something that, again, without upsetting other documentation before us, I think reflecting the record to have seven years, which keeps with the, you know, I think the premise we've been working off of, all in good faith, recognizing if there's a need to go beyond that. There's going to be some extenuating circumstances that are going to present themselves, and I trust the parties in cooperation are going to, you know, going to work through that, so...
Yes. And to be clear, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would like, as soon as possible, they would like this PAR to be established and funded. So they're incentivized to do it as soon as possible.
Well, and again, I just would add, and I don't want to take a lot of time, I know we have other items here this morning, but this is an important one, that the, you know, the establishment of that stewardship endowment, obviously now estimated to be somewhere between the establishment of that stewardship endowment, obviously now estimated to be somewhere between $10 to $12 million, just based upon the information that's available, you know, that's a significant number, and it's going to have to be realized as a part of what we do here today. And certainly in hearing from Mr. Rodriguez on behalf of Louis Holmes, but others that are, you know, will be contributors at airports and, you know, and other entities in the future, that when we have the discussion, because we may very well hear of Mather South later this year, and I think that, you know, we need to have some idea of, you know, timeframe, is that fits in, and then who bears that burden, and, you know, and that's a conversation, obviously, a budgetary one, but certainly one that relates to other matters coming from this board. So I guess I would like to, Mr. Chair, suggest, unless there's some other reason why folks would object, that we take that from 10 to seven years on page four in subsection J, and I think that would reflect then the 10-year in-progress that we've been working on. So, do you have any strong objections to that, Clark? I'm going to ask.
Not at all.
And anybody else?
I would say, just hopefully, the solicitor is okay with that.
Is that problematic then?
Yeah. I think we can do that.
Okay. Lastly, I would just offer one other comment, and that is, is that I think the good work on the ground, and you highlighted that in your comments, so I'm not going to belabor that. But I think that, you know, the work we've done certainly through the support of this board and, you know, our staff and working with other partners, but to prevent against, as Liz Bellas said, you know, the encroachment and certainly the damage that comes from folks who would go in there with vehicles. And so I think the posting cable provides an effective barrier to some of those activities, working on the weed management, the invasives, which I think probably pose as big a threat as anything. And so, and I know that work is ongoing. And I just think the investment that we've done relative to this board's support and working with our community partners through a variety of channels. But I will just, you know, I'm going to put a plug in here for Splash and the classroom in the field, however that's accomplished, but certainly Splash being a leader in that. It just, that, you know, has led itself to a discussion we're going to have about an environmental science campus potentially out at Mather, and then all the things will go on. And I think it really shines a very positive spotlight on this Isla Collin Conservation Preserve, but also on the work that is reflected here today and the work that we'll take in order to maintain and steward this precious resource for generations to come. So I'm supportive of what we have before us today. I thank all those in the audience. I think of Rob Leonard, I know he was here right from the get-go, going back even post-pre closure, and certainly many others, Troy Givens and Rick, and obviously you, Clark, and others who've worked on this throughout the years. So I appreciate all the effort that goes into this, and I'm prepared to support this whenever the board is ready for motion.
Thank you. There's no other questions, so Supervisor Lewis, you'd like to make a motion?
Okay. I would move that then with the two corrections to the grant deed, acknowledging the 1,342 acres and the two spots on the first page, and then also on page four, subsection J, changing that from 10 years to seven years.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
The motion carries. Supervisor Peters is recused. For item 57, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of County of Sacramento. This is the multi-family financing and mortgage revenue bond policies workshop.
Good morning. Christine Weigert with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. Today, I'm, I think there's a PowerPoint, so I should wait just a sec. Good. There we go. Today, I'm presenting the proposed changes to our multi-family lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. The purpose of the policies is to provide SHRA development partners with a clear understanding of how to obtain GAAP financing and bond issuance. The policies were last updated in 2009, and there have been several changes in the last 10 years, including the loss of redevelopment, which is a significant funding source. To date, we've held three stakeholder meetings and a workshop with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Commission, and the following slides summarize our recommended changes. After receiving direction from you today, we'll be once again meeting with our stakeholders and the commission before we come back to you for final approval. So as you're aware, SHRA currently administers the following funding sources: affordable housing trust, affordable housing trust fund fees and the affordable housing fees, which in 2018 totaled about $3.5 million in the county. State programs include mortgage revenue bond issuance and No Place Like Home, in which Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency partners with the county and developers to apply for. Federal programs include CDBG and home, which come directly from HUD, and 2018, $3.2 million in home funds came to the county. So one of the most important aspects of the policies is to provide funding priorities. These priorities provide mechanisms for determining which projects receive funding when multiple applications are received. SHRA works in concert with other funding programs, such as low-income housing tax credits, and developers are required to leverage these other sources to the maximum extent possible. The priorities in our current policies include, number one, preservation of affordable housing. These are currently regulated affordable housing units that are at risk of being lost, primarily due to rents no longer being restricted and their compliance period being over. Number two is recapitalization of affordable housing. While the compliance periods may not be over, the affordable housing units require additional resources for rehabilitation. Number three currently is inclusionary housing, which was important when there was a requirement for new housing developments to build 15% affordable. Of course, today, there's no build option, but a fee instead. And lastly, currently, rehabilitation of market-rate housing into affordable housing and construction of new affordable housing is the last priority. After the workshops, and staff, staff is recommending, I'm sorry, staff is recommending the following priorities. Number one is preservation. It's important to ensure we do not, ensure we not lose existing housing stock. Number two now, though, would be new construction and conversion of non-residential buildings, such as motels, into affordable housing. These are also prioritized in the following order. Number one would be permanent supportive housing and homeless. Number two, workforce housing. Number three, veterans housing. And then lastly, all others. Recapitalization of affordable housing is number three, and rehabilitation of market-rate housing units into affordable housing would be the last priority. As an example, if a new priorities were adopted, and we had two eligible new construction projects, but only had enough funding for one of those, a permanent supportive housing project would receive priority over workforce housing project.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. I wanted to catch Christine before you left the slide here. I want to understand what you just said about the priorities, how they're listed there, because I think, as you'll agree, many of the priorities listed as two-one, two-two, two-three, and two-four there are not mutually exclusive, right? So in other words, we may have permanent supportive housing programs, projects that are intended by design to serve veterans. So how does, how do, how do we reconcile that, the fact that they aren't necessarily always mutually exclusive?
They aren't. I think permanent supportive housing and homeless, though, do have those deeper resident services. And so they are sort of, there could be some workforce housing in those developments, certainly, but they are sort of a little different in nature. So I think, I think we would, if there was permanent supportive housing and workforce, we would probably consider it permanent supportive housing in that first criteria. I think that's how. LaShelle, I don't know if you want to add to that?
I was thinking more the case of homeless housing and services that are intended to serve specifically veterans.
Oh, I see. So if it's homeless and veterans, it would rise the top of permanent supportive housing.
Do we, do we somehow take into account some kind of cumulative additional value if it's, if it's addressing more than one of the priorities at once?
In fact...
Go ahead, please.
In fact, Supervisor Serna, that is one of the things that we look at, to see how many of those particular areas that a project is actually addressing. So, for instance, let's take the Vets Village. That one is one where they're veterans, but they're also a workforce because we're working on trying to get them back into the workforce. So that would really come above, let's say, something else that maybe only had a small amount of permanent supportive housing. So we do look at those criteria to see exactly what we're getting for the investment that we're putting in, in addition to looking at the financing and the funding, and how much money do we have to allocate.
Okay. I did, obviously, the slide kind of struck a chord with me. It may have struck a chord with others, but I certainly don't want to leave the public especially with the impression that veterans are low on some priority list.
Right, and that's exactly what we're asking for you today. This was after a lot of stakeholder meetings, including, you know, those dot exercises and things as we did. This is the feedback we got, but if there, this is exactly what we'd like to know, if you want to make sure that we prioritize.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Just real quickly, LaShelle touched on it in great part. But, for example, you used the Veterans Village issue, that's what occurred to me, but you actually cover all three of those because you have permanent supportive housing, you've got homeless, you know, transitional and/or otherwise, and then workforce and veterans. And so, I mean, so those types of projects, I mean, that's an example of a current one that obviously is in process of being expanded. But, so if you meet, you know, one, two, three, and I guess even four, there could be other in there, then that bumps you up, I guess, as far as considerations. Is that accurate?
Correct, over, let's say, a project that was only addressing workforce housing.
Okay, got it. Okay, thanks.
I lost my, there we go. Oh, backwards. Okay, so the other thing...
I'm sorry.
Back to Mr. Natoli and Mr. Serna's comment about veterans and getting the word out
to the public, maybe the wording could be changed on this item two, in the priorities that includes veterans or something like, because I know they can go in the other categories too.
Absolutely.
Because so many people are concerned about that now.
Yes.
Just a tweet.
No, I appreciate the feedback.
Good point.
So currently, our policies require a minimum of 20% of a project's units to be restricted to 50% of area meeting income, which is considered very low income. Based on the feedback from stakeholders, we're proposing that that minimum be changed to 15% of the units be restricted to 50% of area meeting income. And, I am on the wrong slide, sorry. And that five percent be restricted to 30% area meeting. In other, in other words, we're reducing or increasing the extremely low-income number of units that we require. I'm having a hard time with this.
Sorry, back on that other, back up.
Which one, the fees?
This one. This is, where am I? Yes.
I was on the next, I wanted to ask about the next one. How many additional people a year do you think this will affect?
Well, you know, if a project is 100 units, you know, that'll be, five of the units would be extremely low income instead of very low income. So I think that that's pretty average. So if we do 300 units in a year, you know, what is that? That's 15 units.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I am really out of order here. Sorry. Let me go back to this slide. That SHRA staff performed extensive research on our peer organizations throughout California, including San Francisco, City of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles, San Diego City, and many others. And that research led us to recommend reducing our annual bond monitoring fees by 2.5 basis points. We are also in line with our peer jurisdictions. We recommend a per-unit fee for units receiving local GAAP subsidies due to the increased number of regulatory requirements we're monitoring, particularly in the home program. So, for background, SHRA charges a fee to cover the cost of monitoring that we are required to do, which includes annual file reviews and unit inspections. We also review and approve all management agents, resident services, rent schedules, marketing and leasing practices, and many other things. So that's what that covers. And we're also suggesting a limit to the fees, which will provide savings to our development partners.
Supervisor Frost.
I want to thank you for that. That was one of the things that I had a concern with when I first came on board, and I appreciate the follow-up.
Thank you. Okay. So the revised policies also reflect the new application schedule we implemented a few years ago. With fewer dollars to award, SHRA now accepts applications only twice a year to align with the state tax credit allocation committee schedule. There's an optional third round if additional funding is available. We want to make sure that we post the amounts available on our website at least 30 days in advance of each application period. Okay. The new policy is also clarify that when SHRA is providing financing to a project, we will hold the TAFRA hearing, which is the public hearing approving the issuance of mortgage revenue bonds at the Board of Supervisors meeting. This has long been our practice, but is now reflected in the policies. New to our policies is language requiring communication with governing bodies. SHRA strives to make project selection and underwriting transparent, fair, and biased, unbiased process. Attempts to influence underwriting standards jeopardizes the impartiality of the process. Therefore, once a full application has been submitted, the applicant should not attempt to influence the process and must coordinate with staff prior to contacting members of SHRA's governing bodies. This does not mean that a developer cannot contact governing board members before an application is submitted or after a review is complete. But while our application is underway, it's important that we be able to evaluate all projects using the same standards. That is new language that we're proposing. And finally, we're also providing, proposing a few technical changes to our policies. For example, in our underwriting requirements, we're clarifying what can be charged for parking or pets. For property management requirements, we're now providing more direction on things like security cameras and patrols, and have added a section of affirmative marketing for minimum construction standards. For example, we're requiring playground equipment for all family projects. And for, when there's temporary relocation, we are now requiring a third-party relocation consultant develop a plan for that to make sure that residents are receiving the benefits they're required. And for our smoke-free requirements, we're recommending that they be increased from our current 50% requirement to 100% of development units.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes.
Yeah. Christina, just going back to the third bullet, the minimum construction standards, and I know that over the years, this board has, you know, weighed in on that as we've seen particularly some of the rehabs of projects that have been previously funded through SHRA or under some other affordable housing component. And is there a list of those minimum construction standards? I know that over the years, you've revised that, some of the roofing materials where you only had 15-year life expectancy on roofing versus 20 or 30-year. And, you know, you've done some other things that really, I think, add to the durability, but also, you know, with proper management and obviously in good upkeep of the property can get, you know, the useful life in a way that reflects, I think, that, you know, very solid investments, so we're not going back in 10 or 12 years later, you know, or 15 years later. And we haven't seen any of those recently, but certainly over time, we've seen some of those that where the, you know, they met whatever minimum construction material standards were in the marketplace. But again, now with these precious dollars, and they've been precious for a long time. But, so I'm just curious about what those, what the changes are, and maybe just provide a list. I don't want to belabor. I know we got other items this morning, but...
There absolutely is a very comprehensive list that we've updated over the years and increased the requirements for, everything has to have a minimum of 15 years useful life, but often even more than that, 20 or 30 years. But we can provide that to you. They're actually attached to the policies, and when you see it again for approval, it'll be attached, but we can get that to you. It's not today. You don't have it today.
I didn't see any new lists.
But we can get that to you, for sure.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Yeah, thanks. Back a couple slides on the application process. Maybe you said, and I missed it, it says align with TCAC 9% application schedule. What do you mean by that? Align with their schedule?
Oh, right. So the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee takes applications two times a year, in March and in July. And so we back up our schedule to make sure that we're in line with theirs.
So our applicants will be ready.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
So, that actually concludes my presentation. After receiving your feedback today, we will make updates to the policies and host another stakeholder meeting prior to presenting the revised policies to our commission and then coming back to you for final approval. So if there's anything else you'd like to add or questions you have?
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. So when you discussed this with the commission, were there any members of the audience that had any complaints about this?
There, when we did this, it was a few months ago, several months ago. And the only two things, as I recall, that were discussed, it was if, you know, feedback or comments to the board or governing boards, we talked about that a little bit. LaShelle, do you require?
The other thing that came up was about the income targeting.
Oh, right. They were supportive of that change, to make 5% of the units at 30% AMI versus all of them at 50%. versus all of them at 50%.
Yeah, they expressed a desire to have deeper levels of affordability.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have many, many steps in the right direction, so I applaud you on that. One thing that I would say is that periodically, we send out RFPs for projects, and if we could do a better job of communicating that to the board so that we know when, particularly in our district that we represent, when a project is going out to RFP, and even, you know, as it's being evaluated before it's turned down, that we have an opportunity to hear about that, because sometimes we don't, that doesn't get to us. It may stop at the commission level, but it doesn't get to our board members.
We definitely work on that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or issues?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 58, approve resolution to declare the intent of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Sacramento to withdraw from the Sacramento Regional Solid Waste Authority effective July 1, 2020.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. Doug Sloan with the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. You have before you today a resolution to withdraw from the SWA. The SWA is the Solid Waste Authority, it's a joint.
I'm going to interrupt you, this is actually to the intent of the board, it's a significant difference.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The SWA was formed in 1992, it's a joint agreement between the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. Originally, it was formed to combine the two solid waste programs, and that marriage never took place. It has functioned as the commercial oversight for commercial hauling services within the city and the county. Some of the programs that it currently oversees are some of the illegal dumping programs, the CityCam program, where there are some garbage containers, recycling containers downtown. The SWA actually pays for the service to collect the materials from those programs. It has funded programs with the city code enforcement, county code enforcement, provided $200,000 in the last couple of years for cameras or other barriers to help with illegal dumping. The SWA does provide the oversight for the commercial haulers, so there's an annual franchise permit application. We have somewhere between 17, 19 haulers, three or four of which are larger in general than the others. But we regulate things like the time of service, there are certain commercial areas that are close to residential areas, we can regulate when the service is provided, making sure it doesn't disturb some of the residents there. There's a whole host of other things that the SWA does to regulate. It does have, the board is made up of both the city council and Board of Supervisor members. So what we're looking for is, the central question that we were asking ourselves, at least I was asking myself, was the SWA purpose. So one of the things that the SWA has broad powers to do is to engage in financing, things like that. We know that there are finance, sorry, processing facilities that may be required in the future. When I looked at that, I looked at and said, okay, there's nothing that the SWA has the authority to do that we can't do as a county. And combined, we do look at this as, sorry, if the SWA were to be, if the board does approve a resolution and the SWA letter was sent to the SWA board, there is a minimum of 12 months lead time. So we looked at this from the standpoint of 12 months. The city and county budgets are effective July 1, and that's where we came up with July 1 of 2020 to give everybody time. I will tell you, the SWA staff is 100% committed to working with city staff to make this transition as smooth as possible, up to and including, we're looking at adding, if this is approved, looking at adding into the SWA May budget meeting, some funds in there to, if the city desires to hire a consultant to help with that transition and help identify the issues. During the transition, we would be looking at all of the programs in terms of whether they're a city program or county program, so we can adequately respond. SWA generates about $6 million in franchise fees a year, and we'd want to sync up the costs associated with that for each entity going forward. We do, three of our main MOUs, we have a county EMD. County EMD does inspections and oversight, both in the city and the county. So that's a contract or an MOU we'd have to look at splitting, but SWA does have a separate contract with county code enforcement and a separate MOU with city code enforcement. So those would be easy to split out. So essentially, this split would allow the county to control its own destiny, control its own programs, and from my perspective, one of the things it does is it makes, it increases our ability to respond to the board in terms of issues that are out there. If there's an illegal dumping program or another program that happens, from a county standpoint, we can handle that with the board and respond much quicker than through, typically with the SWA, it's taken much, much longer to get some of the programs started and completed. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I do know there's representatives from the city and from a couple of the haulers here.
Okay, we do have questions from Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So Doug, you mentioned that there would be a 12-month time of transition, I guess. Is that something that, is that enough time? Are you hearing that that's adequate from the city? Because I'll be honest with you, I'm hearing concerns expressed to me as the, one of two county board members here that represent constituencies in the city of Sacramento, that the principal concern is that they need enough time and latitude and perhaps assistance. And you mentioned the prospect of resources that might be available to help the city by way of consultancy. But are you telling us that the 12-month period is something that the city currently agrees with? I know that Mr. Council's here from the city as well, and he'll probably give us his impression on behalf of the city, but what does the 12 months represent?
I actually haven't heard from city staff on that. I did hear from one of the haulers and one of the facility owners, they're both in the audience today, and they expressed some concern that it was not enough time.
Okay.
Supervisor Serna, that is entirely up to the board, 12 months as far as required. If you want more time, we can.
And I assume there's no burning sense of urgency on this one?
No, but just, I want to be clear, that there's a minimum of 12 months.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So we could have a review after 12 months and see where we are?
Or from the outset, set it at 18 months, for instance.
Correct.
Correct. You have that latitude.
Okay. Supervisor Anatoly.
Yeah, just, Doug, I appreciate your presentation, and certainly you've had a chance to visit with board members and briefing us, and I think I've been pretty clear about some of the concerns that I see with the point in time which this comes forward. Again, I don't know what all the genesis is, I appreciate your staff review, obviously you have given some thought to this. A couple of things come to mind, one being that the, you know, in my years of experience serving in the SWA, there's some give and take at that board, but I guess I've never felt from the standpoint of either allocation of the split for the franchise revenues and the dedication towards the various purposes, and actually, you know, return to some of the, to the member entities after we've got through that. In fact, in early years, some of that helped us out, if I'm not mistaken, out at Kiefer, and I know, I think, helped with the city landfill with some of the, you know, costs associated with the city and county's roles in those particular, either active and/or closed landfills. But one of the things that did occur to me, and I guess what I need to have is a better understanding, because at a time when we've got all this coming at us relative to state legislation and the folks over in the Capitol dome, you know, having the, you know, I guess the best ideas about what we all need to do at the local level, and then implementation of that, which seemed to me, and certainly in my discussion with folks, some of whom you may hear from today, that, you know, we're at a time when that regional cooperation and partnership, I think, is, you know, there may have been times when the SWA was, you know, kind of lumbering along and, you know, we, you know, we did what we did and supported programs. But I guess I see, we're at a stage when, you know, when we represent a million and nearly a million and two of the population of this county between the two entities, it seems to me that we, you know, the recommendation to basically show our intent to part our ways, even though in the staff report, it says, you know, that in fact, collaborating on issues of efficiencies and economies of scale would be beneficial to both parties, that's what we do now. And I think that having, you know, some, you know, consistency with respect to, you know, the city and county, certainly with those who do the, you know, private hauling and collection and sorting and disposal, complements not only what we do at Curbside, but obviously the county with its regional asset, the Kiefer landfill, where, you know, a good proportion of the disposed materials go to. But I guess, Doug, again, you're, certainly you've been both in private and public sector, you know, I guess I don't see the argument here at this point in time as to why this helps build regional cooperation and partnerships. It does not, you know, necessarily a bad dissolution, I'm not saying that that's what I see the undertones here, but help me understand. Because I guess, I told you, I'm not persuaded, and I'm not, but I guess when I see that large paragraph about all the things we got to do and how we're going to control our destiny, I've never felt that we haven't been controlling our destiny anyway. We share it with, you know, our members of a city council, so help me understand, if you could.
So, there's really in three laws that we're really dealing with here that have impacted the commercial and residential service. Let me say, going forward, a couple of these started in the last couple of years. One was AB 901, which was, has to do with the reporting structure, and Cal Waste is now, Cal-Wr Cycle, sorry, is now taking on more responsibility of directly getting information from generators and through haulers. You have AB 1826, which was the commercial organics program. That started with, I think it was three years ago, where businesses that had 10 yards, I think, of organic material had to certify that they were sending that to the right facility, and then that ratcheted down to four yards of, and now it's basically every business has to go through and certify whether or not they generate organics and how they're going to handle it. In some cases, 1826 will exempt some businesses, so you could have a State Farm insurance office, they bring their lunch to work, but it doesn't generate enough organic material to require, so the haulers will have to go through a program of identifying. But if you're a mid-sized business, you have a cafeteria, you're going to be falling under 1826. Those are all on the commercial side. The big one that, we've been before the board before as a department and talked about was SB 1383, which, from my perspective, is more driven towards the residential side, that's where we're going to have the impacts on collecting organics at the curbside, which is a huge impact for our department, for the county, because we don't currently pick up green waste weekly, so there's a huge impact there. There are some provisions of 1383 from the inspection and the finding, sorry, the inspections and enforcement side that will carry over into the commercial side, but from my perspective, it's something that we could handle within the franchise agreement. And it's, 1383 is really more driven from my perspective to the residential side.
So are those arguments for us to bust this up? I guess, I'm trying to understand, you know, why is it better, again, and I know you wear the dual hats, obviously you're the SWA, but why is it going to be better afterwards than it is now if we dissolve this?
So from my perspective, it's better response time to the board for issues that come up for illegal dumping or anything on the waste hauling. It's also a savings from my standpoint on the staff time, not only to prefer the SWA board, but we have three and a half people that are dedicated to SWA staff. If the city portion goes away, I'm assuming that we're going to be able to go down to two people. I can use that person and a half or two people on the 1383 prep that we have to do for the county, because we've got a lot of work to do on our side to get ready for January 1 of 2022, which we have to have a program in place to collect the organics. So for me, it's redirecting current staff and not having to hire additional staff down the road to handle the residential 1383 questions.
Okay, I appreciate your explanation. I guess just one other piece of this, though, and, you know, and I appreciate assurances, I talked to Mr. Gill about this a couple of different times, and, you know, as it relates to the actual revenues, and again, I, you know, I guess working off experience, and I know that, you know, NAVs provide assurances, somehow this is going to be firewalled, and I trust that that's the case. But when I look at transient occupancy tax and how that didn't get firewalled, and I also see what happened to sales of property out at Mather, goes into the general fund, and that's stated here in the staff report, maybe in elegantly, but, you know, it talks about a million and a half to the general fund, might go to pay for, what we can now fund out either out of Kiefer, you know, revenues or our overall collection and management of the solid waste system for the lifeline rate assistance, that somehow we may, you know, divert or put additional money in there. Those are all board decisions, I get it, but, you know, I just haven't seen the problem when, at the SWA, outside of what you just mentioned a moment ago, maybe to staffing and so forth, that somehow we've been ineffectual or ineffective in, certainly, four members of this board sit on that board, and actually, most recently, and again, compliments to you and to Tim and others, we got some litter picked up along the roadside that probably hadn't been picked up in 25 years. Because SWA, you know, you heard from us members, you got direction from us, and, you know, again, you worked with Conservation Corps. And I've said this to NAV, and I'm going to say it here publicly, is that, within the realm of priorities, it doesn't, you know, doesn't match up to repairing pavement or to doing some of the other things that solid waste does, but under the SWA, because of blight and illegal dumping and, you know, just the general litter, it got enough recognition that it finally got attended to. Now, we could still do that, yes, but I also recognize the budgeting process we go through annually here and what we're going to be coming up against, and it seems to me that that was pretty effective in the broader concept of actually showing some return to folks, you know, in some of our residential customers out in some of the outlying areas, whether it be in suburban neighborhoods or in even some of the more rural areas of the county. And again, that's a kudo, and I don't want to lose the emphasis, because at SWA, you get that emphasis, here it gets blended with a whole lot of things that we have responsibility for, and with pressures on rates and such for the organic collection, as you so aptly stated, and, you know, and we've had that conversation here, I'm concerned that those other things that we do, and whether it be illegal dumping, which we committed to, that was one of the things that we said when we raised the franchise fee a few years ago, that we were going to put it back into code enforcement, put it back into, you know, making a difference in the quality of life of our neighborhoods. We can still do that, yes, here, but it gets blended with a much bigger tug on the overall dollars and the programmatic elements. And so, for those reasons, I have some real concerns about busting up SWA at this point in time, so, anyway, I don't expect you to have to respond to all that, but I just, you know, as I've thought about this and kind of steeped on it, you know, some of the things that get attention now may not get as much attention even if they come back this way, and that's up to us only, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. We do have members of the public that would like to speak, starting with Alejandro Cabrera.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Alejandro, I'm with the Office of Vice Mayor Arigera. I couldn't be here today, but I'm here to testify on his behalf. He's also Chair of the Solid Waste Authority. Vice Mayor Arigera has heard significantly from businesses and haulers about the impact of this action, and he asks that any action that the city or the county take regarding the Solid Waste Authority to be seamless and as disruptive as possible for businesses to run their day-to-day operations and for haulers that work across jurisdictions, especially across Stockton Boulevard, where we have shared jurisdiction. Delaying the implementation to suspend the Solid Waste Authority from two to three years will allow the city and the county to properly transition, hire, recruit staff, and codify appropriate titles and codes. Vice Mayor Arigera also has that any action to split the solid waste to be taken at the board so that those are impacted, don't have to go through two separate hearings on the same issue. In areas like Stockton Boulevard, which, again, share the county and the city jurisdiction, he wants to be thoughtful on this action and ensure that we're keeping small businesses and our constituents online. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Sikic.
Good morning, my name is Dave Sikic, I'm the president of Atlas here in Sacramento. We've operated, thank you, we've operated a waste and recycling collection company.
We're actually just raising that because we see Mike Lean coming.
He's coming, he's after me. And we've operated at the pleasure of the SWA board for over 20 years. So I'm here today to express my concerns, and, you know, there's kind of dovetailing on Supervisor Anatoly. on Supervisor Nutoli. There's a lot that we're trying to undertake right now. When I look at our industry, we haven't seen this kind of transformation in, certainly in my career, and I've been in this industry for over 40 years, but we're, you know, now trying to get the very last bit of your waste out of your trash can and recycle it. It's a very heavy lift and, you know, we're arguably behind the eight ball on our implementation of 1826 and, you know, largely because we didn't have infrastructure, but I think that's been corrected. AB 341, the recycling with the meltdown of our markets and the whole China sword has made, where we've had to rewrite what is recyclable and what's not. Plastic is no more, a lot of plastics. I heard recently that mixed paper in some jurisdictions is being landfilled. So as we try to get our arms around all of this, and if you think of the waste hauler as really the conduit to your commercial businesses and your multifamily properties, we're trying to provide the services that the SWA says we have to. And those stakeholders really aren't even here and I don't think that they're aware that this action is, is being contemplated. So, you know, I guess for me, I'm, I'm scared that the SWA would break up. I understand that, that the services could be provided under separate jurisdictions. I think it's going to be a little messier. I think it's going to cost a little more money, certainly more work for the waste haulers, but there's only, you know, some half a dozen of us, but it will get down to the stakeholders, to that business community. So what I would ask is that if this is an action you feel like the county needs to undertake, that you would allow plenty of time for us to make sure that there's not a disruption in the momentum that we've already got in place implementing these, these state mandates. And it's very confusing. We're doing mailers, we're doing phone calls, we're doing site visits and we're already dealing with four jurisdictions that are within the county but are outside of SWA. Their messaging is different and it's confusing to our, to our businesses. We're lucky that 75% of my customer base is within SWA and so at least they get a consistent message, but I do hear it all the time from business owners that have multiple businesses that, you know, why is it different in this other jurisdiction?
With that, thank you, sir. Mike Lean.
Mike Lean, LND Landfill. My family's been in the landfill business since 1968 and as I look around the room and think back 27 years ago when SWA was started, I was one of the few who, who were actually here then. And as I think you know, I'm, have always been pro SWA. It relates to some of the current examples Don pointed out, but whether it's reporting, whether it's enforcement, the other issues that come before SWA, the attention and the emphasis that it comes with the ability, you know, with those separate meetings, I think is important. Today, like every day, somewhere between 70 and 85% of the trash that comes to LND Landfill will come from the SWA. And our ability to have one line of reporting and that, and one group that we deal with is very beneficial. There's talk that, you know, when you talk about 28 ordinances that will need to be adopted by the city, the two programs won't be the same. There was hope way back when Citrus Heights split from the SWA and Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove, were not members of the SWA, that their programs would be like the SWA. They're not. Frankly, we don't deal with it that much, but the haulers do and it's problematic and difficult as we're supplying them information that they, that they need. Frankly, if it were up to me, I'd make everybody in the county be in SWA and, and go to the opposite direction, but I'm not king and I'm not going to get to do that. The, I don't, you know, the legislation that's coming from the state Capitol that has to be dealt with is very problematic where the city to take this on, whether it's legal, from the legal side, administrative side, the financial side, the personnel side, it's a heavy lift and to have that accomplished by July, pardon me, by June 30th, 2022, don't think that's realistic. Jerome Council is here, I'm sure he can answer any questions you have in terms of that of where they are at the moment and their ability to accomplish that. And I'm, as those of you who know me, I'm not a big believer in big government. I'm generally for smaller government, less government, actually, but I actually think this is an area where, with the SWA, that, that the government ought to be in and that the government can do a better job, because I suspect by the time we're done at the three and a half full-time equivalents, by the time you take the county people who are going to have to handle the things that SWA are handling, then you put people for the city who are going to have to do the same, I'll bet a lot of money that we'll be north of four people, probably into five or six. And where, and whereas there are some costs of running the SWA and administrative costs, et cetera, I suspect by the time we're done with the personnel that will be needed and those administrative costs related to them, that we'll actually be spending more money and have more government and not be better off. So with that said, I'd be pleased to answer any questions, but.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Michelle Smyra.
Michelle Smyra here on behalf of Republic Services. First off, wanted to thank staff. We had a good meeting last week to sort of get up to speed on where this was. These discussions have been going on for years, some with the city, some with the county. So certainly not, not something new, but something that we all have still, you know, lingering questions on. So, you know, we appreciate the time this summer, perhaps Doug mentioned we can do some stakeholder outreach, sit down with the city and county. You know, the assumption of the contracts, moving the ordinances over for the county should be fairly seamless since they've been handled by the county for all these years. But obviously the city's not, not up to speed on that. So I don't know how long that takes. I think it's important to hear from the city of what that looks like, but, but we stand ready to work with your staff and your team to, to make this work. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions of the board? That's the last comment I have from the public. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address? Then we will bring it back to the board.
Just real quick, before we kind of do that and we exhaust hearing from folks, I'd actually like to bring Mr. Council up to the podium and hear from him representing the city in terms of the timing question that I had specific for Doug earlier.
Yes, sir. Jerome Council from the City of Sacramento, I'm the General Manager for the Recycling and Solid Waste Division. The city is not, well, I'm not opposed to the, the proposal. I am a little concerned with the aggressiveness of the timeline, simply because we haven't studied it. I mean, we've had a lot of talk and about what it will look like, but my office will be responsible for implementing this program on the city side and it would really help if I had a good, clear understanding of, of what that looks like. And, you know, from a staffing standpoint, definitely we'll have to go out, recruit, hire, train staff. We'll also have to, you know, write job specs to show that we're attracting the right type of candidate for this position. So like I say, we're not opposed to it, but a little, the timeline's a little aggressive, but we definitely will try to make it work as best we can.
Thank you. Can you, so I hear you loud and clear about your concerns over the timeline. If 12 months is not the right time, what is the right time?
Me personally, I would, I would, I would like a 24-month timeline.
Okay. And you feel that, that amount of time along with the prospect of some outside professional assistance, that that is something the city, those are the parameters the city could work within to achieve the transition in the way you'd want?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Superintendent Frost.
Could I ask Mr. Council a question?
Oh, sure.
Just before you leave the podium, I didn't want to get in front of this cross. Do you see efficiencies in this? Again, you're not opposing, I get that and, you know, I don't know how free you are to speak on it, but I just, I guess I'm curious as to some of the value that's been stated by some of the, you know, private industry and obviously the partnership that, you know, preceded obviously you and your current position anyway. What do you see of this? You know, if you can work with, I get that, but do you think it's better or not?
I'm, I'm sure there's pros and cons on both sides, sir, but really it, it hasn't been studied, so I really don't have a, a good understanding of those and if they balance out or not. So there, there may be some efficiencies gained by, by separating them, but I can't really speak to those, what they are right now.
Okay, thanks.
Superintendent Frost.
My questions are for Mr. Sloan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You clarified one of my questions, which was, I was under the impression that the City of Sacramento was, there, we had had ongoing conversations and there were some differing priorities relating to commercial, you know, what our specific needs are at the county versus what the city's specific needs are, and that was part of the rationale for dissolving SWA, that, you know, we had come to this place in the road where we have so many new things coming at us and we can each be better served or just as well served by dissolving SWA. Am I under the correct, is this correct?
Yes, well, yes, it is. When you look at it from the commercial standpoint, there are, it's really, it's, it's the same program overall with 1826 and 901 requirements. When you get into the residential side, there's very big differences between the programs. And so there are requests that come through the SWA Board that deal with issues, whether there are an issue in the city, a P-bid, or an issue in the county. Those have always been handled at that, that point, but there's, there's, we're, there is, as we continue on, there is items that have floated around out there that would, would be directing money into a certain program or not. Those haven't come to the SWA Board yet, but there are items that have been floated around. I don't see a big need for SWA money for the programs that we run in the county, but I do know one of the issues that was, was potentially discussed at a staff level was funding for city landfill and some, some programs there. It has not come to the SWA Board. So I can't answer what they are or how much they are or anything else. I just know that was one of the things that city staff had talked with county staff about, SWA staff, sorry.
It seems like in our conversations around 1383 and the organics and coming up to speed, we're going to be needing to work, we're reaching out to multiple jurisdictions and so dissolving SWA doesn't necessarily mean there won't be collaboration between jurisdictions on, on moving, on accomplishing the very aggressive goals that 1383 lays out is, am I, I mean, I, I don't think this means we're not going to work together anymore. I just think it means we're, we're going to do our own thing on the commercial side and we are still going to be working together with 1383 and some of the aggressive goals that we have to reach.
We've, your county staff has been trying to work and SWA staff has been trying to work with the other jurisdictions every chance we get. There are regular, what they call SWIG meetings, it's a solid waste group that meets, is it two months, three months, once a month? And that's got representatives from City of Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove's, and it's a way of trying to, to coordinate the messaging. Mr. Sikic kind of alluded to this earlier, but we have a, the franchise hauler that handles Elk Grove, Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, if you actually look on their residential programs, they don't all handle the same materials in the same way. So trying to do a regional approach, which I'd love to do, and I think we could really partner with the city on a regional educational program about what goes in what container, what's recycling, no, no, put it in loose, no bags, certain plastics, film plastics, for example, aren't part of the program. We've had those, those connections with the city. I don't see anything affecting those going forward. We would love to part with more of the entities in a regional approach, so everybody in the county, whether you're in whichever city you're in or the incorporated area, would have the same materials that go in the blue cart. So there's no, there's, there's no questions. I get questions from people that work in the county, they live just inside the city limits, and our two recycling programs are a little bit different when it comes to pizza boxes. My goal overall would be to work with all the entities trying to get a common material base so that we, we can pool our money together for the educational program on the blue containers.
So I think with SWA over the last year or so, we've had those conversations and we have accomplished extra, we've actually expanded our activities to, as to what Supervisor Nutoli had referred to on, on picking up, you know, cleaning up our streets and, and I remember us having those conversations, do we want to expand our mission beyond what we have been in the past? So it sounded like that's what we were, we were expanding beyond what SWA was originally intended for. And so now what, what you're hoping for is to just, this is just a way to achieve, you know, it sounded like it was a mutual, this is mutual, it's just a matter of winding it down in a way that will not be harmful to our franchise haulers. It sounds like both the city and the county intend to move forward business as usual, just not through SWA.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that the, the decision to separate would be a mutual one necessarily, because the city is a little more impacted with this, they don't have current staff, they have to do the job, as Jerome talked about, the job announcements and things like that. But I do think there's a real desire on the part of, of the two entities to continue partnering every chance we get. We, we currently have an RFP out on the street for organics processing, using the tonnage from the county, the tonnage from the City of Sacramento and the tonnage from the City of Folsom. Again, trying to reach out for as many partners, trying to drive that cost per ton down as low as we can, if we can get somebody or, or other people that will take that material and help us with meeting the goals of 1383, which is pulling organics out of the waste stream. 1826 does that on the commercial side, 1383 does that on the residential side, but we have to have the infrastructure, someplace to send the material where it's going to be composted or sent through a digester or some other method that avoids it from going to landfills.
Does there have to be a timeline on winding it down? Can we just leave it an open-ended timeline to just say, or just put a timeline and that can be extended if needed so that everyone's comfortable that they'll have plenty of time, so the city's comfortable that they'll have plenty of time to, to bring their staff, you know, recruit and, and get all their contracts and everything in order?
So I'm not opposed to extending the timeline. I, I just would like to remind you that we have a January 1st, 2022 deadline to have a wheels-on-the-road pickup of organics at the curbside. And if you back the timeline up on that, right now, we did a very preliminary look at how many routes would be impacted by this. The first look at it was 18 new routes, so that's 20 new trucks with a lead time right now of 16 months or so. That's about $10 million in capital. That would be the hiring of about 25 employees between the drivers and supervisors and some planning people. And if, and again, backing that in, we anticipate going out for an RFP on our routing system this, this year so that we can start to answer the question, what do our current routes look? Do we need to be more efficient? Can we reroute now? And then looking and layering in, picking up curbside material in the green waste can, if that's what we choose to do and what that impact, is it really 18? Is it 15? Is it 20? We need better definition in terms of that. So that all takes staff time and that's planning and working with operations, but that's some of the same people that would be working on the SWA and the transition period. Again, it's that one and a half to two people that I can put into the 1383 planning, that if we're still dealing with the SWA and working that way, we'll have to make other arrangements. But I don't have an objection, as I said, if we want to move it beyond the July 1st of 2020, that's fine.
Thank you.
Superintendent Tully.
Yeah, just two questions, Doug. You touched on it.
You touched on it a moment ago about, you know, the city conversations about the old city landfill. And again, I don't want to present any revisionist history here, so you can go back and check me on this. But it seems to me, when we were in pretty dire straits in the, you know, mid 90s with Kiefer, and what was described then as a death spiral because of tonnage had gone away with, you know, city making some choices about where they were going to haul to, and a whole realm of issues, that the SWA franchise fee supplemented some of the activities out there, you know, from a bottom line. And again, I could be mistaken about that, but I'm almost positive of that. And there were some other landfill closures for smaller landfills that, in both jurisdictions, that we participated on, the contribution towards some monitoring and so forth. So I want to put that forward because, again, as much as it may, the time we're in now may seem, you know, as being a point of contention, and you didn't say it that way, but I think that there was a time, because we made the argument, and I think it was true, that, you know, a lot of the city waste for many periods of years had gone to Kiefer. And so therefore, under the SWA, there was this proportionate, you know, a sharing of the revenues to assist us. And again, if I'm wrong on that, then somebody can correct me. But I wanted to ask you a question about, you mentioned it, and I didn't see it covered in the staff report, but about bonding capacity. We're in this realm of, you know, trying to not just collect at the curb side to meet the obligations of law, but obviously how we're going to process, handle, recycle, whatever we're going to do with all the new additives that are going to be picked up. And you mentioned bonding capacity. And granted, you know, we have a pretty strong financial relative to our solid waste in the county, but it would seem to me that there are some advantages. If you have a city and county, you have an authority that may have unused bonding capacity, obviously there has to be a revenue stream to support that and such. And so if you could just take a moment, I just wanted to maybe provide some clarity because you referenced that you didn't see anything different if this dissolved or busted apart, county, not supposed to speaking for the city, but versus the SWA for encumbering debt.
So when 1383 originally came out, we looked at some of what I heard when that first came out from the CalRecycle folks was that they wanted all the material to go to a processing facility to make compost. It's not the way it's written, and it's not necessarily the intent of it, but they do want the material diverted away from landfills. So when you looked at taking the tonnage in the local area, and that was combining the city green waste and food waste with the counties, that's a significant amount of tonnage. And, you know, we're in an air containment area in this region that would require a lot of specialized air handling equipment. So that cost, we looked at one of the communities, they spent 65, 70 million dollars in the facility and still had odor issues. And so we were looking potentially at the SWA as having to come up with that answer. Part of what we've done within the SWA and joining, again, with city of Folsom and Sacramento was to do this RFP. And we're not, we're not limiting in the RFP to county-owned facilities or city-owned facilities. In fact, we're really looking for the respondents to come up with where they want to take the material and what facility they're going to use, and in some cases, providing the facility for us. So to me, that lessens the need for us to go out and actually build our own facility. Now, should we need to, we've offered up in the RFP, the two county sites that we have transfer stations that we have active permits. The NARS, the North Area Transfer Station, which we do collect current green waste at and transfer out, and then the SATS Transfer Station, South Area Transfer Station, which does not have, it has an active permit, but it does not take any waste in. So we have the ability at one of those two sites, either for an outside company to come in, put a facility in place, obviously collect the air from the, and transfer the material out to another place. And we have that ability at both places. We think we can do that from a revenue bond standpoint at either one, if it has to be a county facility that we would do. You simply have a per-ton fee, and it would include the capital costs for that facility. So there's other ways of doing it outside of the SWA.
So that's the current thinking, at least as you project.
But I'm, again, with the RFP that's out there for the organics, we really are expecting that people will come up with some creative. We had 21 companies come to the mandatory bid conference. So we think it's an active, or a real attractive commodity.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Hi, Doug. We've had three cities leave the SWA, right? Elk Grove, Rancho Cordova, and Citrus Heights. And did they, did that create any problems for them that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
And this is a declaration of intent. So if after a year, you discover that maybe this isn't a good idea, we could reverse our intent, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the maximum? There's been some discussion of adding some number of months to the work. And you mentioned 2022, you've got to spend a lot of time working on that. So how many months additional could we add to the contract without impacting, not the contract without, but the work on this process of withdrawing that wouldn't affect your work on 2022?
Well, I'm comfortable with 18 or 24. If Jerome feels, from the city's standpoint, they need 24, that's fine. I honestly think that one of the things that Michelle raised that was important to us when we did our outreach with some of the haulers, we intend to do, we, within the SWA, we have used the summer months, for example, to do stakeholder meetings, where we have an item that needs more discussion. We bring in the haulers, we bring in the facilities, whoever we need to. We have regular meetings to try and resolve whether it's ordinance changes, how it affects everybody, and kind of work through that process. We actually have proposed to do that with this transition process. I do recognize that 12 months, 14 months may not be enough time for the city to actually go through the process of doing the job spec and running it through their commission and doing that. So to me, that would be a limiting factor on the city's standpoint. But I think the mechanics of it, we're absolutely dedicated as SWA staff to train the city staff and give them every piece of knowledge that we have, and help them any way we can. And just one quick clarification, on the revenue side, the franchise revenue comes from the haulers. Within their billing systems, they have a, I don't know if it's a tax code or what it is, but they know which jurisdiction that business is in, because they're not only reporting to SWA, but they're reporting, if they're working in Rancho, Citrus Heights, or Elk Grove, they're reporting franchise fees to those entities too.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have from the board. Is there a discussion among the board? Mr. Serna.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I think the practical logic that's been expressed by the city in terms of the amount of time that they need is something that I want to be respectful of. And, you know, both Supervisor Kennedy and I have feet in both jurisdictions, so to speak, because of who we represent based on our district geography. And I certainly don't want to inadvertently or intentionally disrupt the ability of our sister agency, our sister jurisdiction, the city of Sacramento, to be able to move forward and, you know, manage their solid waste activities. Because even though this would be a unilateral decision today by this board, obviously when you only have two parties that make up the body, the JPA, that has an immediate effect on the other. So I would, if it's the will of the board to move this forward, I guess I want to make sure that we do not, that we move forward with the understanding that it will be no less than 24 months that we give the city to implement what they need and to transition, and to certainly be able to seek the professional assistance from outside consultancies to help with that transition.
So just clarification, was that the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make that in the form of a motion. And if there are other...
And so what date were you looking at, I mean, specific?
Well, when would the clock start?
2021.
Okay.
Instead of July 1, 2020, we add one more year, we'll make it July 1, 2021.
Okay. And again, just underscoring the point that Ms. Peters just stressed about the fact that today's action is really couched in a way that permits us to undo it if we find that in the course of trying to seek a separation, that it's not going to serve in the best interest of either jurisdiction, we can stop, we can put a stop to that, so.
Okay, I'll second the motion with the caveat that if the maker of the motion agrees, that we come back in six-month intervals for a check-in and how are things going? Two years from now, I don't want to hear up or down, you know, so.
Good idea.
Okay.
We'll put on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Second, any more discussion? Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Natoli voting no.
Next item.
Item 59, authority to amend and increase five fiscal year 2018-19 mental health service provider contracts and execute a 14-month expenditure contract with Central Star Behavioral Health to support the redesign of the Children's Specialty Mental Health outpatient services system.
Dr. Milenson.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the kind comments. Thank you, board. I know you've been very busy this morning.
We're going to have to raise the podium a little bit for Dr. Milenson.
Today. I'm joined by Melissa Jacobs, who's our acting director of Behavioral Health Services, and wanted to talk about our children's redesign of our mental health system in response to what we heard from the community.
And of course, we raised it on you. Well, how can you raise it? A well-timed presentation.
That's totally fine. Good afternoon, and thank you very much, considering the time. I will be very, very brief. This redesign of our children's mental health system was undertaken over a few-year process and essentially was guided by three goals. One, to ensure access. One to, or two, to provide an opportunity for appropriate levels of care for all children and families, regardless of who they are working with as a service provider. And then three, to increase overall access to our community for specialty mental health services. Today's action is really to get your blessing to help us, to allow us to move forward with our transition plan, to implement this redesign. Our providers were notified in December and have been working with Division staff over the last several months, both collectively and individually, to determine the best way to move forward in transition, so we have the least amount of impact to families and to staff who might have been impacted by this redesign. We will come back to you in June to fully implement the redesign moving forward into next fiscal year with new scope of services based on this redesign and the procurement process.
Okay, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thanks, Melissa and Dr. Beal. So I guess the question I have, you first, your first comment was about improving access. And I'm going to ask you about geographical access.
Sure.
And I know you've got providers in the audience, and I recognize many of the folks are all quality programs. And when I see that, I'm, you know, familiar with most of these, and that Vision's Unlimited had been, you know, programmed providing services for, you know, probably better part of 30, 35 years, and were one of the few providers, initially it was located in South Sacramento, and extended those services to areas south of there. Since that thing, obviously, there's been changes, certainly in the, you know, in funding, but also obviously in the population growth in this county, probably doubled over the last 35, 40 years. So I guess I'm curious from the standpoint of access, that when I look at, again, you know, obviously, physical addresses for programs and, you know, and folks can travel there. But when you start getting, in Southern Sacramento County, you still have transportation challenges, and programmatically, you know, where folks are relative to particularly children who are much more dependent, at least if they're not of driving age, on somebody either getting in there or having public transit. So could you take a moment to help me understand, and in particular, you know, I talk about, you know, South Sacramento and Southern Sacramento County, far south?
Sure, absolutely. I was trying to be brief. So when we were looking at the redesign and did geomapping, we looked at not only where our current providers were, but also where the majority of our clients were located, as well as overlaid that with the map of school districts in our community. And really, the idea is that services would be provided at locations that are convenient to the family, which may mean an office, but may also mean in their home, in the community somewhere, or at a school site. So the services will be much more mobile across our system than they are currently. So in terms of South Sacramento and Far South?
Southern Sacramento County, yeah, yeah.
Southern, yes. We did consider that, and we did take a look at the numbers of young people being served there, as well as our ability to provide services to them where they are, as opposed to them having to drive.
And to just elaborate a little bit on that, though, so you took that into account, so how is that accounted for, I guess, in respect to your recommendation and the program provisions? Are you going to go to Galt? Are you going to go to Wilton? Are you going to River Delta?
We will go wherever the clients are that need us, yes.
And are there any physical offices located in those communities?
There are not physical offices located in Wilton or Riverdale.
Oh, I use Wilton, for example. I'll use Galt or Elk Grove, or...
Absolutely, Elk Grove. We will be in Elk Grove, and multiple sites in Elk Grove.
Okay, again, all we have is what we have attached, so I'd like to have some more information as relates to that. Again, that's a constituency, obviously, that certainly reflects on the broader county, because that's not the only area that's geographically removed from the, you know, urban core, but...
Absolutely. And our northern area was also essentially had a lack of services. And so this redesign also supported services in the northern area as well that we didn't have.
So let me ask you one more question, though, then. So I see that San Juan had provided, San Juan Unified School District had provided services, and I mentioned Vision's a moment ago, not getting into the details so much of the RFPs and proposals themselves, but so how, so are the recommended providers, are they providing not just geographic coverage, but are they filling those gaps? Because you had, you know, a million dollars in services and 2 million from San Juan, so you talk about 3 million dollars in services that have been redistributed under the redesign here, so...
Correct.
So help me to understand.
Yes, so correct. There are, we are taking current dollars and redistributing them to those who were awarded contracts to move forward. Providers have met, as I mentioned, collectively and individually with Division staff and with one another in regards to transitioning clients. Many of our providers are working with one another to support transitions of families, so that there's a smooth transition from one provider to another. And it's my understanding that San Juan is going to continue to support their services locally within the district.
I'd like to maybe get a briefing on this, even with the auction being taken today, so I get a better understanding.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thank you. If there's no other questions of the board, I do have some comments from the audience. Followed by Kristi Shorrock.
Hi, good afternoon, board supervisors. I'm Dr. Laura Heinz. I'm the CEO of Stanford Youth Solutions, and I want to speak in support of the augmentation of the proposed mental health contracts for this fiscal year. I am also in support of the focus on the county departments redesign to serve more children across Sacramento County. And I see this as a real opportunity for leveraging federal dollars, which are Medicaid, as we invest more in the youth identified as qualifying for EPSDT services, and in turn, investing in these young people, we're investing in our community, which I have been born and raised here. So I'm very, very committed to ensuring that our young people are served now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristi Shorrock, and I'm representing Sierra Forever Families. Our mission is to transform the lives of children by building and nurturing permanent families. Sierra is being recommended for a contract in the reorganized children's mental health system. We have a long history of collaborating with Sacramento County to provide support and services to Sacramento families, and we look forward to expanding that relationship with this new contract. I urge you to vote yes to the staff recommendation on this item, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristi. Carly Niley, I believe. I may be wrong on that one.
I'm Carly Wiley. I'm the Stars Behavioral Health Group Northern California Regional Administrator. Stars Behavioral Health Group is the parent company to Central Star Behavioral Health, which is being recommended for a new contract through this process. I want to start by commending Sacramento County on their thoughtful design of this program. As Melissa stated, this was a three-year process, and I believe that they did a really good job of looking at how to design this, so that we, they do expand coverage and serve more children and families. Stars Behavioral Health Group is a statewide... Stars Behavioral Health Group is a statewide organization that provides a continuum of services from prevention and early intervention, and child transition-age youth and adult community-based behavioral services, to psychiatric health facilities and crisis residential programs. We have significant experience using evidence-based practices to provide outpatient, intensive outpatient, school-based, wraparound, and full-service partnership programs. We have been honored to provide transition-age youth services in Sacramento County for the past year and a half, and are looking forward to expanding our continuum services, continuum of services in this community by working with children and families. We appreciate Sacramento County's faith in our ability to provide services to youth and families in this community by recommending us for this contract. We understand the complicated nature of a competitive bidding process and know how difficult decisions are made. Finally, we very much appreciate and respect our, and value our partnerships with the CBOs within Sacramento County, and hope to strengthen those throughout this contract. I would appreciate your support of this contract for Central Star Behavioral Health. Additionally, I am in support of the contract increases recommended through this bidding process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's the last card I have. I will say that I think this is further evidence that Sacramento County will continue to, you know, look at how we can serve this community and this population better. This is, our programs will not be stagnant, and I commend staff and our partners for continuing to think innovatively. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I had another question for staff. I see that San Juan Unified School District did not meet the minimum score 70%. Can, is, is that discussable here? I can understand why.
Yes. Yes? I'm looking at council. Yes? Oh, do you want to understand why?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I see they didn't meet the minimum 70%, but was there an area? I mean, I just don't know.
Was there one item? I don't know that there was one item they were scored on multiple different narratives as well as presentations.
Well, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I would maybe, Mr. Milenson, you can talk to me later. I know the San Juan School District, obviously, they have a lot of students, they're meeting the students daily, and it would be a great place to do the work if, if they're qualified. So maybe we can talk about a way to get them to shore up their, whatever the problem was. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all for being here. I do have some quick off-agenda items, and I say quick because I don't think they're here. And that's Frederick Gale. Charles Crowder. Okay, I will maintain, I'll keep those cards for later in this afternoon's session, and with that, we will recess to close session. I will call back to orders, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
For item 60, I do need a motion to continue this to May 14th. This is the Capitol Public Radio Fee Waiver, request for a fee waiver for a use permit located at 7351 Eagles Nest Road in the Vineyard Community.
So moved.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 61 is the Escaton Carmichael Assisted Living Facility, a zoning ordinance amending amendment to the Escaton Special Planning Area and Design Review of a Proposed Assisted Living Facility for a property located at 3939 Walnut Avenue. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Leanne Moffett, your planning director, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item. This is the Escaton Carmichael Project, as indicated, located on Walnut Avenue, south of Gibbons in the Carmichael Community. The request is a zoning ordinance amendment. The site is currently zoned special planning area, so it amends that SPA to allow assisted living facilities as a permitted use within the property in addition to the other permitted uses that are already in the SPA. And it's also a design review for a 31, little under 32,000-square-foot assisted living facility, and judged against compliance with the adopted special planning area and countywide design guidelines.
Just as a little bit of background, there was originally an in-holding parcel here that was zoned limited commercial. I believe it had a circle K on it historically, and so it had this LC zoning that was outside of the special planning area, and that is part of the site where this assisted living facility will be built. So there was a certificate of compliance to reorganize some of the parcel boundaries that ended up with split zoning, and so this fixes that and brings all of that site into the special planning area. So I've already mentioned the zoning ordinance amendment, the development design review. There was a negative declaration that was prepared, looking at land use, noise, traffic, hazardous materials, and cultural resources. I'm going to go over four items in the next couple slides. First, starting with this site plan. It's a little faded up on the screen here, but there is, here is the building, and Walnut is on the south end, so the north arrow is actually off to the right. North is not going up on this graphic. It's over to the right. And they are saving a very large walnut tree, kind of in the upper right-hand side, and I think that'll be, show up later in another slide here. Here is a picture of the elevation of the buildings. These are one-story in nature, even though they do have a fair amount of height with them. It's not a multi-story building, but they do have a lot of articulation and features. I do have Sarah Ellison, the architect here, to answer any questions that the board members may have about the particular architecture and how that relates to the rest of the site. The next graphic is sort of imposing the new building on an aerial of the site, and this shows a little bit better that large walnut tree that's over to the right-hand side of the building, that footprint that's shown in green. There's a very large, very gorgeous old walnut tree that's going to be saved here. There were, this, this exhibit really shows the distance between the building and residential. The SPA standard is that in order to exceed the height limits, the building needs to be set back from residential zoning. In this case, Walnut itself is zoned residential. So the standard is 100 feet, so clearly, they are closer than 100 feet to Walnut, but the actual distance to any residence is more like 151 feet. So we felt that that was reasonable, particularly, again, because it's a single-story building. There's also some questions at the hearing about trash pickup. The trash enclosure is kind of immediately at the southwest corner of the building, kind of to the left, off that private drive, so it's well interior to the site. And there was also a last-minute question that came in yesterday about the site plan and the use of the vacant property on the left here where they show future parking.
Are you, I'm not seeing anything showing up on the screen from where I sit, anyway. So if you're trying to point something out.
The pointer doesn't work? Yeah.
Not on the screen.
Yeah, so...
See, we don't see the pointer is the point.
I can't see it up there, either.
Yeah, it's...
Usually, I can see a red...
There it is, a little bit.
I don't think it's going to, it's not going to show up, right?
It's not designed to show there.
Yeah, so, so there is a vacant property that's not part of this design review, and there was a public inquiry yesterday about whether they're going to use that for parking. So what I want to point out is we did not cover that as part of this design review, and if they come back in, they will have to do design review on that parking lot. And there's also a provision in the SPA that says any use would have to have a 25-foot buffer between residential and the developed portion of the parking lot. So that would be a future review that we would do, and there's already a built-in setback in the SPA, but it's not part of this project.
And when you say future review, that would go to staff, and then it would come back to the Board?
The design review would not typically come to the Board. It would typically be done either at the staff level or at the planning commission, but not the Board.
Okay.
Well, I'm reluctant to leave this photo because I just think it leaves a lot of questions. I don't, I never did see where you said the trash enclosure was going to be. Is it those two lines that look like a door up there?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So what, what are the, in the center of the building that's facing south, I guess, what are those boxes?
That's just the entry.
Oh, that's a walkway and a patio, then?
That's the walkway and the patio and the entry, the overhanging.
Okay. Where, what's the main entrance to the facility?
Um, I, I think there are multiple entrances. I assume that the, a lot of the folks will be coming off the parking lot in the back into the building. You can see that center area there, but there is also parking on the south side of the building. But the, yeah, the main...
So on the...
Sure.
West side there, what are all the black curly cues? This is a crazy drawing.
All right, let's, let's do this. Here we go. Thank you. So this is basically showing how the site is integrate, going to integrate into the rest of the development, so these are parking spaces here. This is parking over here. Here is the trash enclosure. Here's the large tree that's being saved. And then here's the site that we had an inquiry on yesterday that's not part of this review.
Okay, back to the first thing, when you were talking about how it was going to integrate there, is that a, what's the half-circle there? Yeah, that...
Just, this is a walkway and kind of a landscape area. So this is kind of the driveway through here.
So it's a connection to the other buildings?
Yes. Connection to the other buildings, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the site plan? Okay, so this is another exhibit showing a photo along Walnut, as well as the landscaping plan, and they will be doing extensive landscaping along Walnut to match the rest of the site.
Okay.
So you do have recommendations for approval from the Design Review Advisory Committee, unanimous recommendation for approval from the Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, and from the Planning Commission, as well as staff approval. The staff recommendations are that you determine the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopt a negative declaration, approve the zoning ordinance amendment, find the project in substantial compliance with the SPA and the countywide design guidelines subject to findings and conditions and attachment to. And I did want to note for the record, there is no zoning ordinance amendment, so all of the conditions listed in attachment to will be design review conditions. And that concludes the staff presentation, and we do have Sarah Ellis from the...
Yeah, I'd like to have her come. I have several questions.
Sure. Sarah Ellis, Ellis Architects, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So now that we've gotten on to page eight, I can see the entrance is, it looks like the main entrance is facing the other buildings on site?
Okay. I'm sorry, could you say your question again, so I make sure I have...
Where's the pri, where's the primary entrance?
Okay, so just, just a little bit orientation. This is Walnut Avenue here. There's a gated main entrance to the campus in this area here. In the photo, it's just to the right of the photo.
I don't mean to the facility, I mean to this building.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with the site.
That's fine. I was just going to explain how someone might approach the building, and that might explain the entrance, but I was just going to explain that when you get through the gate, you come around, and there's a, there's a port-cochere, which is a drop-off area for this building on the west side of the middle part of the building. That's the main entrance to the building. There's another entrance and exit on the south side, adjacent to some parking spaces on the south side of an access drive on that side. That's the primary parking, I'm sorry, primary entrance points for the building. Those two areas.
So there's four entrances, is what you're saying?
No, there's one right in the middle here.
That's the primary entrance.
Yeah, and then there's a secondary, mostly an exit, but on the south side of the building.
Okay, so we don't have the plan, so what happens when you walk inside the building? There's a, what, a central area and a, are rooms down a spine on either side? Oh.
Ask and you shall receive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the main entrance, as you come in from the port-cochere, is into, through a vestibule, into a waiting area, reception area. Adjacent to that is the main dining room, a sort of public functions in this sort of main, central area. There's some support, support uses on either side of this dining room experience. And then, basically, the units that are shown in yellow, those are one-story, I'm sorry, one-bedroom units, and the orange units on the corners are two-bedroom units. The, the south wing has...
How many units altogether?
There's 20 units.
20?
Mm-hmm. 16 one-bedroom and four two-bedroom units. The central area on the south wing has some support services, but then a large activity room in the center, and then sort of a shared common living room on the other side of that that makes this space more of a common, shared area in the middle. The, the north wing just has a corridor, but at the end of the corridor, there's a common living room that has views out to the walnut tree and the rest of the facility, or, I'm sorry, the rest of the campus from the north side.
Okay. Is, my understanding is there were, I thought there were going to be patios on the rooms.
Those were removed from the project in sort of the last revision. There are some concerns about the residents and some concerns about having access to, I don't know how to say this, the, some concerns about safety and having those patios. They were also, as this project has been evolving over the last couple of years, costs of construction have increased, and so some value needed, some, some value engineering needed to happen to bring the cost more within a budget, so the balconies were removed. There are shared patio areas that residents can use.
Okay, so they will be able to go outside and...
Yeah, so outside of the dining room along Walnut, there's patios at both the south and the north ends that...
What are the building materials of the exterior facade?
Yeah, so there's, I don't know if this has, okay. The exterior building materials are some fiber cement siding, lap siding...
Or what?
Fiber cement lap siding and a combination of cement plaster for the exterior primarily.
Are the, are the colors of the exterior portrayed correctly on the...
Yeah, the only slight difference is that the exterior, there's an exterior green color that's been changed, is going to be changed to a beige color that matches the color scheme of the entrance gate that's just to the north of this building, but the blue and then the white and the beige are all represented correctly on the drawings.
So that doesn't seem to integrate well with the rest of the campus, which is...
Well, the existing campus is, is old and in need of an update. Well, the existing campus is, is old and in need of an update. And so the idea is to kind of take this building and, and use it as a catalyst for future improvements on the other buildings so that it will become more in line with that, integrate that color scheme throughout. There is some blue on the existing buildings, so that ties in there. There's cement plaster, gabled forms throughout, especially on the Village Center and the assisted and nursing building just across the west driveway that related to that current design.
Are you talking about where the current assisted living is?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are you talking about where the current assisted living is?
Yeah, current assisted living and the skilled nursing next to it, just across the way. There's a lot of gabled forms and cement plaster. The color scheme is in need of an update, but again, this building is going to kind of allow that change to kind of happen in the future when improvements happen on those buildings.
How far in the future?
That's a good question, one that I can answer, but maybe someone from Escatton can address that if needed.
Right now, it just looks like a completely separate project. That's why I'm asking. Does anyone up there in the seats know the answer to that question?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Erin with Escatton. And I do the capital planning for Escatton. So the intention would be to phase the project, starting with the buildings that are closest to the street and work our way back. It would be phased over time as the budget allows, but, I mean, it's in the plans to do it, so it's not like it's 10 years in the future or anything like that.
Okay.
And we've already started with the gatehouse, and that's the color that is represented on this building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions? I have no comment cards from the audience, so discussion on the board?
There she is.
Are you done?
Yes.
No further.
We did get one communication came to the planning department and?
No speakers, any speaker requests?
No speakers, yeah. I was just going to say that that was, was only one comment, so did it get addressed? Do you know?
Yes, that was in relation to that adjacent site and the fact that it's indicated as the potential for future parking.
Which would be a separate action, it's not included in this.
Right, and is governed by standards in the SPA. And our project manager did call that person back and explained that, and there is a 25-foot setback requirement adjacent to residential embedded in the SPA. And so any development of that future parking lot would be subject to that 25-foot setback unless they asked for a deviation through a public hearing process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so there's no one here else that wants to speak and no board comments, I'll move approval to recommended action with the language changes that LeAnn Moffett brought up.
Board will second, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 62 is the report back on general plan policy AG5.
All right, good afternoon, members of the board. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, this is a verbal presentation only, no graphics here. This is a report back on general plan policy AG5. And as background, during the hearings on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan in the fall of 2018, some questions arose, particularly from several stakeholders, including the Sacramento County Farm Bureau and the Central Valley Farmland Trust, about general plan policy agricultural element five. So that general plan policy, which is covered in your board report, as well as the original board report for the February 5th hearing, does indicate the potential to allow the stacking of habitat mitigation as well as farmland mitigation when impacts are identified through your SEQA review. It doesn't require that mitigation to be stacked, but it does allow for that consideration. And there was some concerns that there should be potentially separate farmland mitigation from habitat mitigation. So staff did prepare a report back for the February 5th hearing date. That ended up, item was continued as staff and the board members wanted, so that staff could go meet with the Sacramento County Advisory Committee. Staff did go to the AG Advisory Committee meeting on March 13th, and they did indicate that they would favor implementation measure J, which is on page two of the staff report, that the county staff and that the board directed county staff develop and consider the items in that implementation measure J that I will let you read, I will not read the whole thing out loud, which is like to develop a separate fund or ordinance or others otherwise. The staff analysis and the staff recommendation, however, is that we have a mechanism for evaluating this through the current SEQA process. Because an impact would have to be identified, either through the current SEQA process or even if we developed an implementation program with a fund, there would still need to be a nexus and an impact. We think that doing it through SEQA can meet the intent of measure J without the creation of a county-involved managed fund or process. The original staff report for February 5th has a couple of projects listed on page two of that report. I was going to focus on two which have been completed. Those two are Cordova Hills and Aspen 8 and 9, where there were SEQA documents prepared. In both of those cases, the kind of habitat that was being disturbed by the project was grassland, foraging habitat, tended to be vernal pool habitat. And the in-kind habitat replacement that was required was similar in nature to the kind of land that was lost, also foraging grazing land. And so neither of those SEQA documents identified the need for separate farmland mitigation as opposed to the habitat mitigation. That can be contrasted with an older example that's not referenced in that staff report, but that a couple of us recall from way back in the day, which is the East Franklin specific plan. It's an area that ended up being in the city of Elk Grove. And in that case, there was active dairy lands with farmland investments that were being disturbed by the project. And there was a mitigation for farm, there was a mitigation measure in the SEQA document calling for separate farmland mitigation. So we do see a potential distinction between types of projects depending on the nature of the project and the nature of the land that is being disturbed. I also want to note that now that we have an AG Advisory Committee that has been created and is up and running, planning and environmental review staff will be taking the projects that are triggered by this review, which I didn't state before, but is projects that are 50 acres in size or larger, which are typically large enough to trigger a SEQA document. We will be going to the AG Advisory Committee for them to help vet whether there are separate farmland impacts above and beyond the habitat impacts and the habitat mitigation that may be worthy of board consideration through the SEQA process. So that is, this concludes the staff presentation. And I also have Todd Smith here with planning and environmental review to assist me in answering any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, thanks, LeAnn, and certainly thank Todd and John Lundgren, both for their work. I know that we had a different meeting at the Farm Bureau offices on Friday in the afternoon Good Friday, and they were both there, meeting with Charlotte Mitchell from the Farmland Trust and Chris Flores from the AG Commissioner's Office. And I know Lindsey was in and out of both meetings, Lindsey Liebig from the Farm Bureau. Appreciate the effort and certainly the spirit in which you bring this report back and the one previously. I've had a chance to talk with LeAnn a bit, briefings yesterday, and certainly very respectful and understanding of what's being recommended here, or at least what's been outlined, and recommendation not to, at least at this juncture, in light of, I guess, competing priorities to pursue this. But I think what's important, and I stated this to LeAnn yesterday, I get it about the SEQA, I think we all do, certainly recall the East Franklin very well, a discussion. In that case, it was going to be a one-to-one mitigation set aside for certain lands that had been identified, if I recall correctly, it was a couple thousand acres, and it was going to be done elsewhere in the plan area. But the point I want to make, I think I touched on this a bit previously, is that unless we have this tool established, we can do the evaluation, which we will do, I have every bit of faith that will be done, I think with the Agricultural Advisor Committee, that can option, you know, get an opportunity to look at that in greater depth with folks who are actively engaged in farming and ranching activities or certainly knowledgeable about them. But that the general plan, which we went through great lengths in the 2011 general plan to talk about a whole host of things, and there are many, many different types of implementation measures, if we don't have this, we may have this tool at our disposal, but if we don't have something that activates it, then I think what my view would happen over time, and again, certainly, I guess, time would prove whether it's right or wrong, is that thus far, for projects since the East Franklin one, and you mentioned Cordova Hills and the Aspen, where they had grazing lands, which those were brought into the calculation into discussion in the general plan in 2011, that for those areas that are intensely farmed or have other agricultural attributes, they're, you know, soil categorization, irrigation and so forth, that I think it's because of what we've put into practice in recent times is that we certainly do allow stacking, I'm not advocating we don't allow that, but I think as we look, look at AG lands and we look at the aspect of what agriculture contributes to this county, we've got a half a billion dollars in farm gate activity in this county, so it's significant. It's a significant industry, it's a, you know, it's a important pursuit for folks not only employed in it, but certainly food and fiber for our communities, but also for the state and nation and the world in a lot of cases. And I think that recognizing that, you know, we'll do SEQA documents, look at individual projects and take that calculation into account, but then you get to the juncture where you're taking a look at that and you don't have a measure in place that really allows you to trigger, you know, outside of finding some offset or saying now, well, now we're going to have to go out and create a program. I'm not looking just to, for exercise, but I think otherwise, we're kind of in one lane right now. And that is, and as I said this to LeAnn yesterday, it's a bit, it's very latent. If we don't have an implementation measure, even if you don't have all the structure for the fund and so forth, people presume they're not going to pay a fee in order to do that because thus far, we've allowed for stacking and getting credits for, you know, and rightfully so. Both those projects, this board has passed and proven, and I supported both those projects that were outlined, and we have some other ones that are coming forward that may not have intensively farmed areas. But I think the standpoint of our AG Advisor Committee, certainly staff analysis, I recognize this, you know, has to get worked into a work program if we give the direction to do it. You know, we're eight years beyond the adoption of general plan, pretty soon we're going to be doing an updated of the general plan, and we have a lot of implementation measures in lots of different sections that, you know, won't have been achieved because of obviously just the tasks that are embodied in that. I think this is an important one, one that we need to involve certainly the, you know, development industry, but certainly agricultural industry. I think we're at a juncture where obviously we're seeing, you know, discussion about, you know, community growth and development, we have our own general plan, and we're looking at a corridor that, you know, isn't, you know, threatening, you know, in a lot of cases, prime farmlands, although there's probably some. But we do have other places in the general plan, both in north and south, where those would get environmentally reviewed in the SEQA process. But you come down to it at the time of the hearing, and again, looking forward, and you don't have this, and so folks, well, you don't have a program, and they're, you know, people are always interested in getting their, advancing their projects and so forth. Yes, the board could say you've got to do a one-to-one mitigation or you've got to pay a fee. I think we should have some structure, at least a framework in place. And again, I would certainly be, you know, interested to hear from, you know, LeAnn or Todd or others about that. And I think, again, I don't see, it has to be urgently done tomorrow, but I think we got to, you know, get a plan of action and begin to work, go to work on this, recognizing that it maybe has to be, maybe has to be integrated into other work because we have an interest and we have continuing development proposals that are going to come before this board over time. And just to always presume that they get the benefit of stacking because we have an HCP and they pay that fee, and then we mitigate for habitat, but we then give them the benefit mitigating for farmland impacts as a part of that. And so in some ways, they get a bit of a pass. Not that it hasn't been SEQA evaluated and it may be grazing lands or less, less prime farmlands. And so I guess, kind of sum it up, I would just say that I'm of the opinion and view that implementation measure J was integral to the general plan adoption, certainly to AG5, which we spent a lot of time talking about those categories and about acreage thresholds and about how that would, you know, be connected to development over time. We've just, you know, recently concluded the, you know, years-long, decades-long effort on the HCP. I think this is equally important, and not just for the southern part of the county, but there are other areas in the county as well. And so taking that into consideration, I think this needs to be a priority, and obviously one that this board, you know, could, you know, should take a look at and decide if it's something that's of a higher priority for us collectively. But again, it's not to counter what LeAnn said, that I think staff certainly is looking out in their view, but that comes a little narrower than I think the broader implementation of this potentially. And again, we always reserve the right as a board certainly to, to implement that in a way, obviously, that takes into account factors you cited in both staff reports, LeAnn, and I appreciate that work. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to respond to, again, you know, it's not a counterpoint, but I just, again, I, as I've reflected on this, I think this is important, and it's, it's one of those tools that shouldn't just be latent in the tool chest, you should have, at least have some framework so that you aren't starting from scratch and you get to a board decision and they say, well, you don't have that, so the only way we're going to do this now is you're going to stack. And you're not going to have to mitigate for farmland in a way that would maybe provide it for through these other mechanisms if we were to ultimately vet this and go through a process to bring this into the general plan context with a, you know, fully vetted in any way, implementation measure. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, LeAnn.
I don't think I have too much to add.
So, now I don't know if you have any speakers, Mr. Chair or not?
No, there's no, oh, yes, we do have speakers, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. Lindsey Liebig, followed of course by Charlotte Mitchell.
By the way, I would acknowledge there are 667 implementation measures in the general plan, so I recognize this has some healthy competition in the context of priorities, so.
Good afternoon, Lindsey Liebig, Executive Director, Sacramento County Farm Bureau. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this back before you again. It was something that both Charlotte and myself talked with each one of you about during the SS HCP, you know, final discussions. And to say that we're disappointed with the staff's recommendation would probably be an understatement. Phil, like, we showed up at the table and worked very hard for decades, you know, working on the SS HCP and really trying to provide a voice to agriculture in there, and came out with a really robust habitat preservation plan. We're asking for the same robust language for agriculture, and we see this as a way to, you know, look at these things on a case-by-case basis, which doesn't, you know, present a strong foothold for agriculture in this county, leaves a lot of room for leeway and loopholes. And then even in the fact that in this policy, there's opportunities to mitigate outside of Sacramento County, really shows us no preservation for agriculture and the importance of that, of those lands in this county. So, you know, we've asked, you know, several times to just have this be, as Supervisor Nottoli said, you know, a priority and something that is, you know, having given the same robust nature that the HCP did, and that we are still continuing to work with that so that agriculture has that equal footing. And that's what we're continuing to ask for, is just making sure that those implementation measures are there and they're utilized as appropriate, and really showing a strong protection of agricultural lands in this county and not just on a case-by-case basis, you know, when it's deemed appropriate at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. You actually got five minutes of time into two, that was.
Very good.
Charlotte.
Charlotte Mitchell, California Farmland Trust, formerly Central Valley Farmland Trust, and certainly echo Lindsey's position. I spent more than a decade going to weekly meetings, if not several times a week, for the Habitat Conservation Plan. Farm Bureau invested a lot of time and resources, legal advisory, as well as our state organization. So to, at the end of the day, be told one thing, yes, we will work with you, we'll listen to you, and then at the end of the day, not, it is disappointing. The AG Advisory Committee listened to staff. Staff said it's going to cost too much to be able to go back in the general plan and do any revisions. It's too expensive for developers to do farmland mitigation, so why would we impose that onto them? Sense on the dollar, when you consider labor is probably their biggest challenge that they have today, that it should be done on a case-by-case basis. I sat here in front of this board maybe 10 years ago, when that case-by-case basis came up and said, we'll only do this once, quoted by a supervisor, it'll only happen once, we'll approve this development project, it won't happen again. That development project now has engulfed agricultural land to where there's an island created for farmers that can't be, can't be economically viable anymore. So the only question is, why are we going to? question is, why are we gonna save them, let's just develop the whole thing? And there's still areas within the county's urban areas where ag land is still a viable economic unit and should be protected, this body needs to be a leadership within this county to other jurisdictions to say, you need to do the same thing. Farmland is an important component, economic engine of the county, set an example so our other local jurisdictions and LAFCO can follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thanks. Mr. Chair, again, I don't know if there's any other questions of staff, but again, I think, you know, not to off our counterpoint, but I, for one, think that we need to make this a priority, and that, you know, we've dealt with case-by-case, certainly even pre-adoption of the latest version of the general plan, and I think to the point about the HCP, all of us certainly currently seated here, you know, have weighed in on that in recent years, but I know that over the course of certainly 20-plus years, that, you know, countless meetings, a lot of discussion regarding that, and when we were in this chambers, I think to what Lindsey said and Charlotte referenced as well, and talking about the HCP last summer, and certainly looking to this adoption and implementation, that we, and again, we fulfilled the first portion of that is to have this review of AG5. I appreciate where Leanne and certainly her staff come from, again, competing priorities, but I believe, not just on behalf of the district I represent, but I think on behalf of this county, that the agricultural component is key to our economy, and it anchors, you know, you know, one segment of our local economy and certainly our heritage, and I think that we as a county have shown good leadership and stewardship in many respects, and certainly our general plan reflected that, and again, Leanne, you were here as we went through that, and so was Todd and John, and again, you could pick lots of different things, but I think when it comes down to, on the heels of the HCP, which we'll continue to work through the implementation of that, and obviously some of, I think, the unsettledness that folks in the farming and ranching community had about that and what the impacts, but I think as we look at development and certainly environmental, biological mitigations and agriculture, we need to keep that in the framework of when projects come before, it's not just on a case-by-case basis, so I guess I would be prepared to make a motion, assuming that there's a second and there's a willingness by this board to give some further direction to Leanne and her staff, obviously, like, have to prioritize this, and I know you've obviously given us the cautions, but I don't see this being any less important than a lot of other things that are embedded there, recognizing that we have a lot of pressures as a county, and one that continues to take on the role of urbanizing and certainly, you know, rebuilding in areas where we've already urbanized, and our general plan allows for that, I think our general plan needs to have a strong implementation measure in there, and again, it'll be properly vetted, it won't be something that's gonna be just imposed on folks, but use our agricultural advisor committee, our farmers and ranchers, and certainly our development and environmental communities, just as we did with HCP, take this seriously, let's do it, let's be, you know, again, I don't think we have to recreate the wheel necessarily, I think there are examples, but we want to make sure it fits for our community, for our county, and for the people that, you know, collectively represent, so I would, again, I'd give direction today, because they're not recommending for this, but that we actually go forward and have a proposal come back for us to look at the development of measure J implementation and what goes into that at work program, maybe so we have an idea what's gonna take to accomplish that, both cost-wise, but certainly from a standpoint of time-wise in particular.
Okay, as we know, this is a report back and not an action item, but we'll hear from the rest of the board.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I'm concerned about having everything on your list a priority, and so if you're gonna come back on this, I'd like to know what it's competing with, what are the, what are the other priorities for time and expense?
We could report back on that. I think, you know, one of the things that's fundamental to staff recommendation is, it's not just about the competing priorities, it really is staff's recommendation that fundamentally looking at things through each individual project's sequo document can get us the same, to the same end result. So, we'd be happy to report about the priorities, but our staff recommendation stands regardless of the prioritization issue, so I just wanted to clarify that. But we can certainly report back about if it is the direction of the board to work on this, how we would go about doing that, and what other items that might affect.
So, I, the only reason I said that is if someone said it was a, you know, it was receiving file, or it was gonna come back, if it's, so it probably depends on what the various motions might be.
Well, it's a report back, is all it says, it's not an action item at this time.
I mean, we did list in the staff report other items...
Recommend an action.
Recommend an action, if you look, though, it's no action.
Oh, I see, do not, okay, all right, okay, so. I'm used to voting on everything.
Supervisor Frost.
So, I guess, I, I have, you know, over time, been learning a lot about land planning over the last couple of years, and, and a lot of the steps that developers and everybody has to go through in order to create attainable housing opportunities, and given that we are already able to meet the required needs without another step or another layer of, you know, overview or bureaucracy, I wonder if it makes sense to add another layer when we already have the, the process in place to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing and mitigating, you know, any, any impact to our farmlands. And I, I'm not sure adding another layer or a totally different mitigation separate, you know, you know, separate for agriculture over what we've already got going, when we're already on a case-by-case basis, there's a lot of situations where it may not, there may not even be an impact to agriculture lands, and it may not even apply to that project. So, are we, are we, are we talking about a whole nother layer of regulation that would be separate from what we're already doing, and on top of what we're already doing, because we're already stacking easements and doing, mitigating as necessary based on the sequo, so is that what we're talking about when we're talking about an agricultural element, implementation of a whole new process, just that separates out every single project, whether they relate to, whether they have any impact on agriculture or not?
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't developed a program yet, so it's difficult for me to stand here and speculate what it might look like after we got through a dialogue and a presumed working process with the various stakeholders, you know, the kinds of things that we have done in the past, the Swainson Talk Program, staff has managed, which allows small property owners to fee out, and then we acquire the land, so that's something we're familiar with, that the HCP is generally, for much of the county, going to replace. But again, it comes back to the identification of what's the impact, and if you're going to layer a fee like you did with the HCP, in that case, the HCP had a fairly sophisticated nexus analysis with the identification of what the nexus was between the impact and the fee, and so we would have to potentially look at something like that, or if we were gonna do a blanket fee, or maybe it's some other different approach, I don't know, we haven't, we haven't developed a program, so I'm sort of speculating, and Todd, I don't know if you have anything else you want to weigh in on?
I do want to add, or reiterate, I guess, what Leanne has said, that staff's position on this is purely from the perspective of having to administer a new program. We don't inherently disagree with the testimony from Charlotte and Lindsey at all, we totally understand where they're coming from, and we do believe that the ag community is a vital part of the Sacramento region's economy, we are the farm-to-fort capital after all, but we fundamentally believe that the secret process provides for a mechanism to achieve a certain desired outcome on a case-by-case basis, depending on the unique characteristics of a given project. From staff's perspective, we do agree or believe that there are protections in AG5 and other policies in the ag element, as well as the land use element, such as defending where the urban services boundary is as a way of constraining growth in the county. The current Important Farmland Map, that's published every couple of years by the state, shows all the prime farmland, the majority of the prime farmland, excuse me, is located outside the urban services boundary, so the county is not, and for the most part, developing within prime farmland. So, I guess, the conclusion...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The conclusion is, there's a way to get there without a county-run program.
And so, would the, what is the difference between where we're at now, where we are already getting there, and the other scenario? Is it, the only difference is that it's a fee system that's put into place, or what is the difference? What will we accomplish that we don't, aren't doing now? Because I have, I, I want to protect our farmlands too, I, I'm not, I'm not able to express it as well as you just, but ditto on what you just said, I feel the same way, but I'm curious to know what is the difference?
That's a good question. I don't know that there is a fundamental difference in the outcome. I suppose from one perspective, it could be viewed that the county would be taking a leadership role when it comes to agriculture and establishing a framework that I think that Supervisor Natoli alluded to, and that was something that we heard during our conversation with the stakeholders on last Friday. But beyond the existing policies, we're not clear on exactly what that might be at this time.
So, would it require more staff, or a financial commitment, a large financial commitment to change, to make an amendment to the general plan? I'm not sure, I don't know what that means.
I mean, I guess I, I sort of presume we would be going through an analysis of what you would be looking at in each project-by-project DIR, trying to frame up when those impacts would exist and under what circumstance, and so you would be doing that both in the individual project DIRs, as well as coming up with a construct in terms of, you know, in this circumstance, there's this impact, but you'd be doing it on a more theoretical framework sort of basis?
So, you feel like we'd be duplicating our, what we're already doing, we're already doing it?
I mean, I guess, again, but we haven't developed a program, or interacted with stakeholders, so I feel a little like I'm struggling to describe what the program would be in the absence of going through a process to develop it, admittedly, but yeah.
Mr. Gill.
I think if the, what I'm hearing is that we have a supervisor that is instituted in an overall program, and staff's recommendation is go through the sequel process, not to keep belaboring this issue, but we could bring back what that will look like, and if there is redundancy to the questions you're asking, we're not equipped at this point to answer that, but we can bring you back a framework, what that will look like, and then pose that policy question back to you.
Mr. Natoli, can I jump in?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I think that's the direction we need to go in today. I think that there is a interest in making sure that we're doing everything we can that's reasonable, and not necessarily duplicative of fees and processes that are already in place, but I think there is a sensitivity to protecting the ag land that we have in this county, and the, the fact that we are the farm-to-fort capital of the nation, or at least self-proclaimed, and the fact that it is a significant part of our economy, so I think that we need to send this one back a bit, because personally, I don't think this is it. I think that this is burdensome to the point of being, or overburdensome to the point of being duplicative and overly, when you, when you already have sequel, you already have the HCP, but that's not to say that we have overturned every stone to figure out, is there something that we can do to actually get closer to where Supervisor Natoli wants, but something that maybe doesn't go, reach as far as measure J. Is that fair enough, sir?
Yeah, I think it's fine, measure J, it didn't say case-by-case, and it didn't say how are you gonna do this, and so I think to the chair's point, you know, coming back, I mean, again, as I've listened here, certainly to my colleagues, I think, you know, they're, you know, they're all fair questions, and I think just the information that this board needs to have, I, you know, again, I respect the staff recommendation, but, you know, the general plan was adopted by this board, and it called it an implementation measure, we have the ability to wrestle with that as to how that looks and how it might impact, and I think one thing I just wanted to, to maybe put a finer point to is that we're not talking, you know, I don't think there's any conceivable way you could say if you don't have an impact that you're gonna pay some fee or be required to mitigate, I mean, that's clearly, and so, these are projects that would have an impact, and I think, again, to the basic question, if, you know, if in fact, you do the sequel analysis, you're gonna know, at least from that standpoint, then how then do you implement for addressing that issue? And is it, you know, is it a separate program, is it something that's combined with? Right now, in a lot of cases, they can, if they can do the habitat conservation, they can just stack it on top of the farmland, and they get the okay on it, generally, I mean, that's, you know, it doesn't work quite that simply, but, and so I'm not looking, you know, and I don't think, you know, certainly our folks from agriculture are looking to try to just put a fee in place to charge somebody, so I think, to your point, Mr. Chair, and what's been said by others, is that, you know, Nav, go back, and again, give us an idea of, you know, because there are different, some of our surrounding counties do it differently than us, and again, we, you know, this needs to be comfortable for our community, for our county, but I think in the spirit of things to what Mr. Kennedy said, but certainly others, let's, you know, let's take a real serious look at this and recognizing there's an effort that's gonna be involved here, but, and maybe it's not us running a program, maybe we have a, you know, a third-party, you know, agreement, you know, with somebody to manage it for us, I don't know, but I'd like to explore it further, yes.
Yeah, we'll bring back when we're ready to sign.
Thank you.
So, you want a date? You want to...
Actually, if I could not have a date, let us, let me work with planning and then come back and let you know what date we have.
Okay.
I just want to see how much work's gonna go into this.
That's fair, that's fair. I believe Supervisor Serna has...
So, as we move forward, and as you've heard from some of my colleagues, in terms of an interest in refining this and perhaps continuing to keep this in front of us, I'd also like to know whether or not there's any potential risk of meeting unintended consequences, meaning that if you were to go down the path far relative to a fee, fee program, regardless of who administers it, whether it's the county or some other third-party, could there possibly be instances where the mitigation that you would have acquired if you had not had the fee program and you simply followed kind of the natural process or, as ad hoc as it may be, when it comes to negotiating development agreements and figuring out, you know, pathways for entitlements for projects, is there the prospect that agriculture could actually sustain less resource space to mitigate the impacts if you simply narrowed the discussion to a fee program and stopped the conversation at that point? That's one, that's one thing I haven't heard anything from staff on, I haven't heard, I haven't heard it discussed here at the board, I don't know if it's come up in conversations outside of this chambers, and I'm not suggesting that there's an inherent risk that that would happen frequently, but the kind of law of unintended consequences does kind of raise its ugly head on, on occasion when it comes to dealing with the uncertainties of urban and suburban development, so something to think about.
Okay, that's helpful, we'll take that into account as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
I need a motion to continue item 63 to May 14th, this is the report back on flood mitigation for the Point Pleasant area.
Ms. Chair, I would move to continue, I just wanted to, I don't know if anybody's in the audience, that there's some additional information I think that needs provided at the staff level on this, I know there are folks that are waiting and have been in a queue to, you know, potentially raise their houses and do other things that would, you know, be individually applied, and I've had a chance to talk at least briefly with the water resources staff, but again, I appreciate the work you went into this one, I'm gonna ask for some, a bit more information between now and May 14th, but we'll be prepared to hear it then, so.
Okay, the chair will second that, but before we vote, I do have a card from Wendy Wilkinson, do you understand we're continuing this, and are you good not speaking today? You, you can, you, you, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You, you can, you, you, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, and we have our appointments left.
Yep, so nominations, Item 64. You are continuing to May 14, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Continuing to May 21, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to June 4, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, and the Sacramento Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. And for your matters today, we have the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Matthew Burnett is...
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
The chiefs recommend continuing to May 21.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Reappoint Ted Walter.
And South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 4.
And Supervisor Kennedy?
Continue to May 21.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations. All that's left are the CEO comments.
No comments.
Supervisor comments?
Good job.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.
The closed session.
Closed session. Closed session, that's right.